Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the Tuesday, March 12th, Meeting of the Board of Selectmen. First item on the agenda is to approve the bills, the payrolls, and the warrants.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Opposed? So voted. Item two is to approve the minutes of October 29th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Does anyone have any announcements this evening?
Mr. Chairman, the B.O., Building Committee, met earlier tonight, and we're pleased to report that the most recent cost reconciliation between the contractor and the other various estimates is holding. Additionally, DCAM has completed their final edits and offers on the deeds, so everything is, all of the other vast documents that need to be signed are in process. You'll note that as a result of the change in that deed, item 15 is on this agenda relative to a couple of minor changes that DCAM has made, but it seems like we're all set to go later this week or the following week for the transaction. The manager may want to add something additionally.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? Mr. Mizagai, do you have anything to report?
Yes, thank you. I will start with the B.O. project. I just wanted to inform the board that it looks most favorable to pursue the general obligation borrowing for the total project cost in July of this year, so we are going to prepare additional timelines and schedules with our financial advisor to get a bond rating for early June and be able to access the market in late June and have you sign off on those notes in early July. This does two things, or two things are becoming clear from this timeline. One, there'll be no, or there'll be only a partial impact on the fiscal year 2020 budget versus a full impact that we had originally projected, so we will make one interest payment versus a principal and interest payment in the coming fiscal year. And since we have maybe benefited from what at least the Federal Reserve or others believe is a bit of a stumble in the economy, the Federal Reserve has not raised interest rates from December, and it does, it looks like they're going to at least be patient through July, which means we should have a more favorable interest rate whenever we access the market. And our financial advisor projects that that could save us an additional, at this point in time, million dollars in interest over what we reported at the town meeting. So we'll continue to make sure we work our process to get a favorable bond rating, hopefully an upgrade over previous years, and access the market in July of this coming year. Tomorrow, I just, a couple of things that I wanted to point out beyond the B.O. project. Tomorrow, we'll publish an invitation for bids for the construction of a solar array at the water treatment plant. That's going to be a 60 kilowatt hour array that will be for the benefit of the water treatment plant to reduce our electricity costs. The Assistant Manager, myself, and Selco General Manager, Michael Hale, attended a Smart Cities Forum at the Worcester Research Bureau and WPI at the beginning of last week, along with representatives from other cities and towns, including the City of Worcester. It was a very favorable and interesting discussion that we look to hopefully find ways to partner with both the city and WPI on technological-based initiatives that will help improve the way we operate here in Shrewsbury. And I just wanted to report that we also met and held a preliminary meeting with the Department of Transportation regarding the Lake Street Road closure, so we can understand their requirements and begin appropriate coordination for public outreach this spring on that. That's it.
Thank you. Okay. So I'd like to convene the 7:05 meeting with William R. Molinari, Senior, Proposed Manager for the Italian American Victory Club, 26 Dewey Road, for a change of manager to their all alcohol club license. Mr. Molinari, are you with us? Please come forward, have a seat. Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, William R. Molinari.
And you are the new proposed manager of the Italian American Club, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Everything seems to be in order in the application. Have you managed an establishment like this in the past?
I have, I have.
Where was that, or what was it?
We had a family tavern that we operated and...
What community?
And this was down in Worcester.
Any questions for members of the board? Okay, it's a pretty routine application. This is not a public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Just one question.
Selectmen DePaul.
Nothing else is changing. They're just changing managers, right? The operations stay the same.
Just their name, yes.
Okay, good. I'm good. I make, Mr. John?
Selectmen DePaul.
I make a motion that we approve the application of William O. Anari as the manager for the Italian American Victory Club, 26 Dewey Road, for their all alcohol club license.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. We have, next on the agenda, a seven...
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Good luck to you. I'm sure we'll see you down there.
See you.
That's right.
Thank you.
We have a 7:10 joint meeting with the Historic Preservation Committee to hear a report on the status of the committee and a proposed historic preservation bylaw. It's not a public hearing. By my phone here, it's 7:07. I think we can commence with members of the Historic Preservation Committee. Kindly come forward. Good evening. Could you kindly identify yourself for the record?
Sure. I'm Bob Ryan, Colonial Drive, Chair of the Shrewsbury Historic Preservation Committee.
I'm Bernie Forletta, Colton Lane, Vice Chair of the Committee.
And you have another committee member in attendance with you?
We have several.
Okay, could you just let us know who they are?
Alan Taylor's here, Jeff Mulich is here, Paul Schwab is here, and I think that's it.
Okay, very good.
Jim Kane is here.
And Dave.
Sorry about Dave, Dave and Jim Kane.
Please proceed.
Okay.
So, just very quickly, because we are short on time, we appreciate the opportunity to present. As you know, we've already submitted a report and a model proposed historic preservation bylaw. We are having a public hearing ourselves on Thursday at 6 o'clock in the old Selectmen's Meeting Room, so we welcome your attendance, and I'm going to turn it over to Bernie to give the presentation.
Thank you, Bob. Also, thank you for allowing us to have this meeting or this presentation. Much of the material I'll be going over in this next few minutes, you've received from us, and I believe it was January the 27th. This is a presentation that gives a very, very brief summary of that information. In 1966, the National Historic Preservation Act was passed, and on its 50th year anniversary in 1960, there was quite a celebration for that. And this is a quote from Max Page's book about the spirit and direction of the nation is founded upon and reflected in its history, historic heritage, and thus must be saved for future generations of Americans, so that they might have a sense of orientation and gain cultural, aesthetic, inspirational, economic, and energy benefits from the preservation of this irreplaceable heritage. And basically, this, this quote sums up the, the reason that we're so earnest in our support of supporting Shrewsbury's historical heritage. The, as mentioned, the, the committee was established on March 27th, 2018, or the approval for the committee. And you can see that it was to create a committee of nine members. The charge for the committee was that it was to use the assessor's database to establish a baseline for focus of attention on structures within certain years of registration with a town or building permits, and determine reasonable outcomes to reduce or eliminate the eventual demolition of such structures. Additionally, to explore changes in zoning of bylaws to allow for greater flexibility for side and rear yard setbacks to avoid high land values and new home values to cause likely demolition of structures, provided that an appropriate deed restriction is placed on the structure. We met 10 times, beginning on August the 30th. The committee members are listed right there. The subject matter that we reviewed included demolition delay bylaws, both statewide and locally, list of bylaws and ordinances by municipalities, preservation through bylaws ordinances, the Mass Historical Commission Model Demolition Bylaw, which is considered to be the best practices bylaw, the Architectural Preservation District, Community Preservation Act, Local Historic District, and Scenic Roads, and Review of Property Listings. Below, you see a photograph of one of the founding settlers in Shrewsbury, the Gershob Wheelock, which was in 1732. The opening of the proposed bylaw is included in this paragraph, and this bylaw is enacted for the purpose of observing and protecting historically significant structures and sites within Shrewsbury, which constitute or reflect distinctive features of the architectural, cultural, economic, political, and social history of the town, and to limit the detrimental effect of demolition on the character of the town. Through this bylaw, owners of preferably preserved structures are encouraged to seek alternative options that will preserve, rehabilitate, or restore such buildings, and town residents are alerted to impending demolitions of significant buildings. By preserving and protecting historically significant buildings, streetscapes, and neighborhoods, this bylaw promotes the public welfare by helping to maintain the town as an attractive and desirable place to live. To achieve these purposes, Shrewsbury's Historical Commission is authorized to advise the building inspector with respect to demolition permit applications. The issuance of demolition permits is regulated as provided by this bylaw. This is an example, a map, of the various towns and municipalities that do have bylaws. And what you see on the right side is a pie chart, which shows the percentages of bylaws in which the delay period would last, ranging from six months up to about 18 months, 18 This was a survey that was conducted by one of the committee members of local towns to see whether or not they had demolition delay bylaws, how long a demolition delay was, and what the extent, how far back in history they would go, with one going prior to 1925, probably the most recent in Westboro, prior to 1950. Our proposal is on a rolling 100-year basis from the date of the application for a demolition. This is a flow chart of the application process. Once an application for demolition is, is submitted to the building inspector, he'll, if, if, he will make a determination about the age of the building, and if it falls within the 100-year span, he will forward that to the commission, the Historical Commission, will determine the significance of the property, the building, within 15 days. If there is not any significance, then the demolition may proceed. The Historic Commission, this Historical Commission, if the Historical Commission determines that the building is significant, it notifies the application and building inspector. Within 15 days, no permit is issued. If the Historic Commission determines, does not notify the building inspector, the permit may be issued. A public hearing will be held within 21 business days of the written notification to the building inspector. The Historical Commission decides within 14 days after the public hearing that the building should not be preferably preserved, in which case, the demolition permit may be issued. The Historic Commission decides within 14 business days after the public meeting, the building should be preferably preserved. The Historical Commission works with the applicant to preferably preserve the structure. A positive outcome, of course, would be the structure is preserved. Should the structure cannot be preserved, the demolition permit will be issued. This is the list, it's a frequency distribution of houses, showing the number of historic houses, historically significant hospital houses, excuse me, by decade, from 1720 up to 1899 or 1900. This, this is, this was done to give you a, a view or a sense of the number of houses that we do have that are historically significant on age alone. We have a number of hospital, I'm sorry, my prior life, I worked in hospitals, so I keep saying hospital when I mean historic, of significant structures here. And I'm afraid, I had an eye exam today, my vision is sort of still blurry, it's left over from that, but the upper corner is a house on Gulf Street that was built in 1827. And you have a very small house on Grafton Street that I admire every time I pass it when I'm driving by that way. And, and then, of course, the house that's made with stucco in between. This is an impact example of homes that have, in which demo permits have been pulled in 2018. Two of them might have been considered as significant. Unfortunately, before any determination could be made on that, they've been demolished. One on High Street, I was out there yesterday, and all it is is a bunch of boulders and a sign for sale for land. And the one over on Floral Street, if you see a visual of it from Google, it still has the old house in there. It's quite a distance off the street, and I think they had replaced that with a number of houses there. It was, probably had a couple of acres of land there. We're to use assessor's data, we were charged to use assessor data, database, to establish a baseline for focus of attention on structures within certain years of, of registration with the town or building, with the town or building permits. We were also charged to determine reasonable outcomes to reduce or eliminate the eventual demolition of Finally, we were charged with, to, to explore changes in zoning bylaws to allow for greater flexibility for side and rear yard setbacks to avoid high land, land values and new home values to cause the likely demolition of such structures, provided that an appropriate deed restriction is placed on the subject. That pretty much concludes the, the presentation. We have quite a number of supplemental information included in this, houses that have been demolished, potentially significant, historically significant houses that are along Main Street mostly, but on Gulf Street and others, the Wheelock House, the John Moses House, built in 1832, this is the one we had earlier up there, fireplace has an original crane and brick oven, the original windows are original as well, and wide floor, floorboards are intact, and so on. Close up at the Gideon Harlow House, 1827, on Gulf Street, that's, that's a house I really like. The bricks were made right on land from the land. This is the bylaw, and this was the introduction to the bylaw and its purpose. There are some definitions in the bylaw, which they defined historically significant or building site. They list a couple of criteria, three of them, as to what defines significance. This is the procedure that's followed. Enforcement remedies, separability. This is just a text about the demolition delay process. I won't read through it since I've gone through the... These are some of the sources, just a few of the sources that were used in the information that was done. Particularly telling was the Council of Arts of Shrewsbury, Massachusetts, All Houses, Houses in Shrewsbury, copyright 1985. That book has probably been taken out so often, it's used so often by the Historical Society and various other people. But it was a project by art students, and the houses in that book, I suspect, were limited by the number of students in that particular class that drew, drew photographs, drew pictures of those houses and described them a bit. Holbrook and Jaffian Highways, The Best Highway and the Old Post Roads, both are very interesting books. One comment on Holbrook's book, he was, he was out of the West Coast, Seattle or Oregon, and he placed a town that's about 20 miles north of Boston as being 20 miles east of Boston. Of course, that would be in the middle of the ocean, so you could tell he was a Westerner when he wrote the book. And we have various publications from the Massachusetts Historical Commission. We have an excellent field guide on houses. If you need a comprehensive field guide on the architecture of houses from colonial times to the present, that would be the one to get. Glossary, Max Page's book on Preservation Matters, and Mike Purnas, a couple of his books, I've gone through many times, and Elizabeth's book, Elizabeth Ward's book for, not sure I have that in there correctly. That pretty much summarizes the scope of what we've done and the, the charge that we, what we were charged with and the fulfillment of that charge.
I was just going to add that the, another screen we showed from 1900 showed about 200 houses. We had the assessor run a listing of 100-year-old plus houses, and that number is 400-something, which, when you look at the total housing stock in Shrewsbury, is less than 5% of the overall number of houses. So it's probably like 4% of the overall number of houses over, are 100 years or older.
Okay, and that...
Any questions?
Oh, no, I'm just going to make sure that completes the...
That completes it, yes.
Presentation. Questions or comments for members of the board? Well, I have a few.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did someone raise their hand over there?
I'm sorry.
Yeah. So, so thank you for the update. I was reviewing the minutes from, I think, I think the last time you were here was December of 2017, or...
Yes.
Whenever, whenever you were last here.
Yes.
And one of the, I guess, suggestions by the Board of Selectmen at that time was to also explore other alternative approaches, and if the possibility of incentives or some other approach, rather than the demolition, the enforced demolition delay. So my question is, you know, you know, did you, did you do that? Because I see in the report a couple of places where it's mentioned that, that you had considered some other, I think you said, I think the language is considered other options, but decided that the demolition delay was, was the one that had more likely put a passing town meeting. So could you just elaborate on that a little bit and tell us?
Well, yeah, Mr. Kane did. Well, Mr. Kane did suggest an incentive-based program to possibly come up with a pool of money from somewhere and to do outreach to select preferentially preserved houses. The problem that the majority of the committee had with that was if we've got four hundred-something houses in town, who do you pick? You know, there's a whole issue of equity. What house, who determines what house? Because if they're not going to demolish their house, why give them a sum of money to agree not to demolish the house? So we felt that there wasn't really an equitable way to try to pick, you know, first of all, the question would become, where would the money come from? You know, we don't have a CPA in town, so where would the money come from to give someone an incentive not to demolish the house? And secondly, really, the issue is equity. You know, there's four hundred-something houses that are over a hundred years old. How do you pick which house to preserve? So.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Please proceed.
So, not having done the amount of work that you, this committee has done and looked into it, but off the top of my head, having looked at your flow chart, I would think it wouldn't be a matter of incentivizing, approaching all those, it would be, again, it would be the same process. Someone comes forward to pull a demolition, a permit to demo.
Right.
And then, at that point, that person is identified. So rather than now putting them through a process of demolition delay, there is some type of a process that says, okay, you know, can we, we have this program to incentivize, how do we do that? So, again, I'm not.
Right, but I think without having a CPA in town, which is not favorable at this point in time with all the other costs, there is a question of where do you get resources to work with somebody to preserve the property? You know, it's really a question of where can you get resources to have them do something else with that property?
You know, I don't want to argue the case here, just would say, we get incentive and grants from a variety of sources without having a CPA, so I'm just not following that.
May I just jump in? Would you yield for a moment since my name came up? There's a variety of approaches in life. One is using a hammer, and one is seeking to create an incentive or a climate in which people who have a certain home of certain characteristics or building come forward and seek to protect it. And unfortunately, there were a variety of offerings from, let's have a public hearing, to target people with older buildings so they can come in and offer their ideas, to creating some level of incentive, again, identifying an area or identifying homes. There was conversation offered about, is it Irish Thorpe down off of Main Street? You have a whole collection of what many would argue are historically significant homes or structures. There were a variety of ideas offered that were from the viewpoint of incentive, and they were outright rejected. There was no desire to engage other organizations in town and go that route. The route that immediately attracted and that the majority coalesced around was the demolition delay bylaw. Now, Mr. Ryan mentions that there's no money to back up some incentive program, there's no money to back this up. This creates a group of five, I believe, that rides around town and picks out the building that shouldn't be demoed, and then goes to the building inspector, another group. You have all these people who aren't elected, who are now out riding around as long as it's over a hundred years old, and getting in the way of personal property rights. And I must tell you that, as a fool who bought an older home in this town, I find that rather offensive. But there was no serious engagement on the matter of incentivizing anything. The committee, and this is why committees are dangerous sometimes, depending on your perspective, it immediately coalesced around this as the option. This, in my opinion, is slightly rehashed of the one we saw not too long ago, and the one we saw a few years ago that was pulled in town meeting, and one that was talked about a few years before that. I did not vote to support this report to the Board of Selectmen. I don't know if the rest of the group was unanimous or not, but now that my name was brought up, I wanted to go on record with one member's version of how matters developed.
Well, if I could comment, we are having a public hearing Thursday. We desired to have a public hearing tonight. We have wanted to have a public hearing before town meeting to get feedback from those impacted people.
Bob, ten weeks ago, I said, let's have a public hearing. And we said we needed to wait to hear from the Board of Selectmen to do that. No, no, what one member said was, no, we don't want people knowing what we're doing. That's what one member said.
I honestly don't recall that, Jen.
I'm sure you don't, and it wasn't you, but I'm sure you don't. That's the comment that was said, and that's a very troubling comment to have been said by a committee established by this board.
I mean, as you know, in January, I submitted a report seeking to get feedback from the Board of Selectmen, hoping to have a public hearing prior to town meeting.
We could have had a public hearing in November. We could have had a public hearing umpteen times. There was a request to have a public hearing, to, if you will, target Main Street, because there was some coalescing, well, we have buildings of historic significance along Main Street. Great, let's do a mailing, let's have a public hearing. No. But it's history at this point.
Oh, may I make a comment?
I just wanted to, one second.
One moment, Selectman Cassavial.
I saw confused faces over CPA, and I just thought it might be important to just let the people know that it's the Community Preservation Act that we're talking about, and that that's a method of securing funds for some sort of demolition delay bylaw. People just looked confused, so.
By means of a surcharge on the property tax.
Surcharge on your property tax bill, correct.
Selectman Mill.
I did have another question.
You yielded to Selectman Kane, actually.
That's all right. And it dovetails in what Selectman Kane said, but it's also a question, it's something I pulled out from the report again, because there's language in the report. So, and I'm sorry, I've been trying to find where it is, but essentially, my question is around, have you directly approached any current owners of homes to solicit their?
Individual members have spoken to individual homeowners and gotten mixed reviews. Some, such as Mr. Kane, that it's a violation of their rights, some felt that it was acceptable. It's important to understand, the demolition delay bylaw does not prevent the sale of a house, the demolition delay bylaw does not prevent the demolition of a house. It puts a, it creates a structure by which a pause should be put in place to take a look at a particular property and see whether or not it should be torn down. So, you know, we have surveyed people. Part of the reason of Thursday's meeting that we have put on Facebook, and it was published today by Valerie, is to try to get people to come in and give us feedback on the proposal. It's a historic, I call demolition delay bylaw, it's basically historic preservation bylaw. So we are seeking feedback Thursday night.
Mr. Chairman?
Selectman Kane.
But what's the outcome? So you delay it, so you delay, you get in the middle of a transaction, great, there's no CPA in town to pay for it, there was no appetite to go generate, if you will, some type of incentive money so that you could sign an option so that demolition wouldn't be the likely outcome? So it's, there's a ying, but no yang.
Well, the, part of my discussion, I come from the town of Walpole, and I had discussion with the town of Walpole, which last year, their vice chair and their chair of the Historical Commission, last year at their town meeting, they increased their six-month delay to a one-year delay. Their reasoning was, and we heard the same feedback from our town administrators, that typically a development takes four months or so anyways to get done, and so a six-month delay meant nothing. A one-year delay in Walpole caused some developers to actually try to work with the town to see what they could do to do their development. So one reason we chose not to go the bylaw route, or proposed bylaws, is the hope is that town meeting would do a general bylaw where majority vote. There was feedback from our planning board that they were the better entity to propose zoning bylaw changes, and there was a feeling that there are significant bylaws on the books already that can be used by the planning board or the ZBA to try to work with a developer to allow the development of a property without tearing down the existing property.
Can I follow up on that?
Sure.
Did you have a meeting with the planning board?
Planning board members on our committee.
Okay.
Steve Bullock.
Okay. Can I?
Selectman DePaul.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I, I'll.
I think I'm sorry.
No, I'm good, no, I'll come back to it when it still needs to be answered.
Do you have a question, Mr. DePaul, or?
Yes. I have a few questions. I guess my threshold question is, except for making this thing a longer duration, what is different about, and I know, Mr. Flotter, you and I had talked at the last hearing, there were some things that you took out, like not having just one person determine if it's potentially historically significant, I understand that. But basically, what's different about this than the last one, except making it a year longer? I guess that's my first question.
Well, we, I incorporated a number of your suggestions, particularly the one concerning a hazard, tightened the text up on that, with the suggestion that it be by a majority vote of a committee on any action that would be taken. The, there are some clarifying definitions in the definition section concerning what significant, what significance means, or preferably preserved means, I believe was added into that, to tighten up the language on that, and hopefully to be more clear as to what the intent of the law is, or the bylaw is. But, so it is, it's been a revised and updated bylaw that pretty much meets the state Massachusetts Historical Commission's best practices bylaw that they have in there, and that was the model on it, and we state that in this.
I think one of the big changes, Mo, from last year, I wasn't part of that last year group, was there was a proposal for a new separate committee to be formed to oversee it. Discussions with Christopher Scully, who was the state historical society expert. He actually had initially had an issue with the creation of our committee, he didn't really understand what it was about. I think the bylaw properly puts the onus on the Historical Commission, and one of the things that's available to help the Historical Commission is there are grant opportunities available, and my understanding is it might be another year from now, where the Historical Commission can seek a grant to study possibly up to a hundred twenty-five houses. So they can, you know, as a group, try to look at what are the most likely houses to be potentially demolished, and have those studied to make it easier. So down the road, if one of those people come forward, they've already done the research to find out, is there any significance to this property, or should we just go ahead and say, you know, building inspector issued the demolition permit?
So, when the Historical Commission was formed, I was one of the people who advocated for it. And the intent of that, or one of the main intents of that, was to survey properties in town and try to identify what was historically significant. I don't know how long ago that was, but it had to be over ten years. Has the Historical Commission actually completed that work? Because the last time we were here, they hadn't.
My understanding from our Historical Commission people or person is that they have new members on their committee, and their ideal goal is to pursue this grant to work on doing a study.
Okay, so, assuming that this was something that would go forward, if that's the case, I guess, maybe I missed it in here, when would this take effect? If this went to town meeting in May?
We discussed that it potentially would take effect January first, two thousand twenty, to give people time to be aware of it, and if they are on the cusp of doing a development, they would basically be able to escape the demolition delay.
If we, if the Historical Commission could apply for a grant, and they could get a grant, why wouldn't we be pushing that off longer so that we knew which properties we were talking about? Because you yourself said out of four hundred, which ones do we pick?
Right.
That's a lot, I know you don't think that's a lot of properties, that's a lot of properties. So why, why aren't, why, why hasn't, why, why aren't we waiting for the Historic Commission, Historical Commission, I'm sorry, to file and get the grant and identify the properties? Instead of doing this on an ad hoc basis, as somebody comes in for a building permit?
Could I let Paul answer from the Historical Commission?
Sure.
Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, I'm Paul Schwab, I am vice chair of the Historic Commission and the representative on the Historic Preservation Commission. Thank you all for having us tonight. So to speak quickly to that, our research, which has been extensive around this proposed bylaw, has found that if we're seeking this potential grant, that one of the things that folks from the state level are looking at is if a demolition bylaw exists already in the town. So we've done a huge amount of work with the Historic Commission over the last several years. I'm a relatively new member, I just joined in December, and thank you all for your unanimous support in that. So I do want to say also that folks that are on the Historic Commission were voted unanimously by you, so we really appreciate that. But our work in going forward with this, we feel, is if we're going to apply for any grants from the state level, that we want to ensure that this bylaw is in place. We feel it's going to help us a great deal to potentially have some funds to perhaps reach out to folks, to incentivize them. Now, incentivizing them prior to that, our research showed that when we looked at demolition bylaws in other towns, that didn't necessarily happen, that didn't necessarily exist. There may be some towns that are doing that, perhaps through CPA, perhaps through other means, but we felt it would be inappropriate to go that route first, seeing as though we, as sort of a board, couldn't necessarily go out and write that we're seeking funds for this immediately. We didn't feel that was appropriate for us to do.
So, you're saying that the chances of getting the grant are greater if you have a demolition delay?
Yes, it shows an investment in historic preservation. Without that, we have no foundation in that. We have our Historic Commission, we have our Historic District Commission. They do not necessarily receive funding of any kind to go out and do historic preservation. We're essentially doing that on a volunteer basis, on our own time, when we can do that. It's difficult work. Potentially, if we were to pass the bylaw, which shows that we're making the move towards true historic preservation, then, in seeking this grant, we could potentially have some help with that. Now, a small board like the Historic Commission is out there working hard to try and make that happen, but it is a daunting task. So with some grant funding, the potential of having some consultants come in to help us do that work is something that is a real possibility. That would further increase our ability to go out and identify these folks, have dialogue with them, and possibly have some incentives. Now, I don't know what that looks like, I don't want to speak to how exactly that will come down the pike, but if we first start with this, we're building the foundation to go further in our historic preservation in town, and that's going to be really critical.
Okay, so do we have any idea out of the four hundred, just number-wise, without identifying each process? I know there were a few that were listed in the package. Do we have any idea how many houses we're talking about?
We gave you a list, we included a list in the report of about thirty-five houses that are high priority. The, beyond that, we don't have, we have, we have the listings of the properties, but it hasn't been sorted through in a priority basis like that thirty-five has been. Many of those houses probably would not be preferably preserved because the, what made them historic, the integrity of the structure's probably been destroyed through the years. And that would have to be all sorted out as we go through the list, but the first priorities are the ones on that list that we gave you, or included with the report.
Okay.
Mr. DePaul, may I ask a question related to your inquiry?
Sure.
What's the average size of a grant, do we know?
That is a fair question.
Want to do a survey? Can we, rather, I enjoy the conversation, but let's try to keep things.
Of course.
Appropriate and direct your comments up here, and we'll try to parse. appropriate and direct your comments up here, and we'll try to parse them out appropriately.
Of course.
So your question was, what kind of grants are we looking at?
What size?
And you're, and you're now suggesting that perhaps Mr. Samara has the answer?
Yes.
Mr. Samara?
You're probably looking between $20,000 and $40,000.
And, and?
For a proper survey.
And Mr. Samara, you serve on the historical commission?
As chairman.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, to the earlier point raised, in terms of cart before the horse, if we care about this, and we have $130 million budget, why don't we put 50 grand in next year and actually do the assessment so that we're knowledgeable of what we're talking about, instead of this random 100-year throw a net? And then actually understand what's before us?
With all due respect, the 100-year is not just a random net. That, that's been well documented and researched.
The point is, right now, you have nothing but this empty promise, because there's no money to stop an eventual. All you're trying to do is get in the way of a transaction. There is no there there, because there's no money to either buy it and place it in a trust or something along those lines. So why not actually understand the challenge and then have a much more refined plan to target those, those parcel structures that are of value?
I think that there's 150 or 160 communities in the state of Massachusetts that have attacked this problem of preserving properties by doing a demolition delay.
But have they preserved one piece of property, Bob?
Yes.
One? Okay, good job.
Many.
I'd like to actually know a number, because I don't believe that. Don't believe it. Flat out, don't believe it.
So we can, we can name examples from Walpole. There are examples next door in Northborough, in Southborough as well, and Westborough. I've actually seen it as well in Leominster, where my father served as the president of the historic society. He helped do that work as well. So I have seen it happen, and it, it can be done. This is where it starts, though.
Selectman DePaolo?
Do you, just to that point, I guess, kind of interesting, do you have any sense of the percentage of properties that are put on a delay that do get preserved?
So you're asking of the number?
That get put on, that gets put under a demolition delay?
How many actually get preserved?
Just percentage wise? Is it half?
That would be really difficult to predict. There's so much to preferably preserving a home.
I'm not talking about predicting it. I'm talking about, do we, is there any data that says this many were delayed, this many were preserved?
I, I don't have that data.
That's okay. I just thought it would be interesting to know that, know that number. So I, I can appreciate it, it'd be hard to predict it.
Yeah, it would be very skewed data that would be coming from individual towns that's not necessarily put together.
Can I keep going? Did you want to ask?
Go right ahead, Mr. DePaolo.
So just a couple of other things, because I'm, I know what you're trying to do, and I'm concerned about how we're going to do it. The determination of a property being historically preserved, does it have to, is the criteria going to be that it's a house that would be eligible to be on the historic registry, either the state or national? What, I guess, what is the criteria going to be?
There are several criteria. One of them you've just mentioned, you also have the, the national register. You also have a statewide register, MACRIS, that we've talked about. The element could be that the person individually makes the property significant. For example, George Washington's home was a property that was preserved back in the 1850s, when it almost came under demolishment, and same way with our state town hall, when they wanted to demolish the town hall there on Congress Street to make way for State Street to connect up with Court Street, until a lot of the residents realized what a treasure they had there. So, so the building, the architecture, the significance, the association with people, Artemis Ward, for example?
I know generally what you, I understand generally what you're saying.
So those are the criteria.
But to be on the historic register, you've got to have documentation.
Yes, you do.
You've got to prove that it's worthy of being on there, have property where I work that's on the register. But is there going to be documenta, documentation that the historical commission would have to put together during this demolition delay period to, to actually document that this is a historic house, other than, you know, I'm, I'm being facetious, but this is a really old house, it was, you know, built in 1787, it should be saved?
It would seem to me, it would seem to me that the historical commission would have to make their case, the, the preferably preserved case, such that the documentation of, of the elements that we talked about would have to be in there before the declaration.
But the bylaw isn't specific to that. It says generally what you said, and I agree, if somebody historically important, architecture, something happened there. It, it doesn't say that there has to be documentation. It just says generally, it's got to be, you know, those several things we talked about. So I'm a little concerned about that, that it seems, the way it's written, it, it's a bit arbitrary. I, I understand that good people's intentions are going to be what, what they are, that they're going to try to do their best. But I, I found through my life that trust the written word, as opposed to what somebody says their intent is. So I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about that.
It would seem to me that there is a allowance for a public hearing on that before a declaration is made. And at the public hearing, it would seem to me that there would be documentation presented to make the case by the historical commission. The research would have to be done, the due diligence would have to be done to, to demonstrate that this is indeed a building that should be preserved.
It is a fair point, though, that perhaps we would need.
I'm just.
I understand.
I get into the weeds. It just seems to me is there is no prescription in here for how it's determined, what is required to determine that it actually was historically significant, because Mo DePaolo lived there. It is, because I lived there, but that's besides the point. But seriously, I, I.
I think I can answer your point, if you'd just give me.
Sure, okay.
So one of the, the considerations that we're looking at is in determining that a home is historic presently, we place things on the MACRIS register. And there is criteria that we follow in order to do that. So that would certainly be one of the main criteria that we'd be looking at to determine if a home were to be preferably preserved. There are many homes that are on that now, so obviously if one came up potentially for demolition, that documentation would be there already for us. But that would be a process that the historic commission would, would look at in determining that as well.
So that's good, but, so if this were to go forward, is there a way? I mean, if this was to go forward, the only thing that's required right now is a motion, not the article itself. And the article itself could be presented at town meeting, so you only need the motion. I mean, would there be consideration to put something in there that specifies? I don't, it doesn't have to be down to the end, but
I think that's a very fair point.
Similar to what you said, I, I, I would feel a lot more, personally, and I'm only one vote in
Of course.
240 town meeting members, but I would feel a lot more comfortable that I knew that there was something more prescriptive about how we're going to get there. I understand the intent.
Yep.
Just two other questions, and I'll stop. Deed restrictions. You mentioned going for deed restrictions on properties as a way to help preserve them. How are we going to secure a deed restriction from a landowner, property owner, ahead of time? I mean, we, is the assumption that, that they're altruistic and they, and they, they see the benefit of doing this, that they're going to, they're going to put that restriction on? Or is there going to be a financial incentive? How are we going to do that? I'm just wondering how we're going to get deed restrictions on properties if we have no money? How, how are we going to do that?
I'm not.
I don't, I don't recall a deed restriction as part of the bylaw.
No, the deed, it's, no. I'm sorry. That was one of the things that you talked about doing to try to preserve houses.
Right, but we, I think the bylaw doesn't.
Okay, so that's not part of it?
No.
Okay, all right, sorry. I, I guess I just want to make one comment. This has come up before, and Mr. Ryan alluded to it again, that the onus is on the developer. I, I really strongly disagree with that. If, if I own a property that I think, and, and maybe it is historical, but I don't think it's historically significant, and I want to sell it, and it's 100 years old, it's 110 years old. If I, if I was a, if, if I was talking to a developer, there's, there's no way, a developer or another homeowner who are, are another purchaser who want to tear the house down and just build a house on a lot, they just want the lot. There's no way somebody's going to buy a house that they think should be torn down. The reason they want that property is for, to build whatever, to build another house, that they're going to buy that with no conditions on it, so that the current landowner is going to be free and clear, they're going to pass papers in 90 days and they're done. Anybody with any common sense is either going to buy it or with a contingency, or they're not going to buy it at all. If they buy it with a contingency, you, the house isn't going to pass, it, the papers aren't going to pass on it, so it's not going to change ownership. So the current landowner is going to be sitting on the property, and they're going to have to sit on it for a year, which actually, if, if the commission took its full allotted time to go through the process, it adds another three months. So that's 15 months. That landowner is going to be tied up unless there's a developer who's a real, real speculator to think that he's going to be able to prevail. So I, I just disagree philosophically that this isn't.
There is a provision of a hardship exception, where if you're trying to work with the committee and you can show that there is no other way around it, the committee, the commission can grant a waiver.
That's where I was going to next. What qualifies as a hardship? And don't tell me you know it when you see it, because that's not going to work. It's not going to convince me.
But I think if you.
What is the criteria for a hardship?
I would think if you, as you just said, have somebody trying to sell a house who said, "I can only find people that want to buy my house that want to tear it down," I would think that would be something you would look at. Because, because you're, you're saying that while this one guy, you know, I mean, who says it's not somebody else who wants to buy that old house? Who doesn't want to tear it down?
I'm talking about somebody who is buying it with the intent of tearing it down.
Right, but you're, but you're mutually excluding any other person who's going to buy it.
No, because we're talking about a demolition bylaw. If I wanted to buy Mr. Kane's house because I thought it's historic and, and I wanted to live in a historic house, I wouldn't be concerned about a demolition bylaw, because I'm not going to tear it down.
Right.
I'm talking about somebody who thinks their property really only has value if the house is torn down. But go, go back to the hardship, and we had this discussion in the past when we talked about this. How do we determine, what determines a hardship? Not that I just want to sell my house and I, I want to tear it down, because that defeats the whole purpose of it. I can say, geez, I got to sell this thing. And you go, well, it might be historic, but tear it down. That's not realistic. I mean, that, why bother having the bylaw? So what's the, who's going to determine that? Who's going to determine what the criteria are? I don't even know how you could, what a hardship is. Is it somebody's going to lose their house to foreclosure? What, what is it? If they're going to go bankrupt? What's the standard going to be?
I guess we don't necessarily have that written out yet, but I, I would point to that the commission in good faith would be attempting to determine what that hardship. And I, and I know that's not necessarily the answer you're looking for, but I would point to other examples of this with other boards, where folks come up with hardships from time to time. I saw one a ways back at a zoning meeting where a gentleman was trying to build a, many types of structures.
That's a different kind of hardship.
Yes, of cour, well, he had.
If you're going to tear a house down, it's permanent. It isn't going to back up.
Yes, 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 but he had, he had submitted applications and paid money for all of that, and he didn't want to do that again, so the commission allowed him to not necessarily do that.
The commission? Are you talking about the zoning board, or are you talking about the commission?
Planning board, sorry.
Okay, so, but that's different. The law says, and I know that we, nobody adheres 100% to that law. There's three criteria, either meet these or you don't.
Of course.
So I, you don't have to have an answer.
It is, it is a fair criticism. I think it's something that we would need to work on a bit more. I, I think you're, you're correct.
Assuming this is going to be discussed at town meeting, I, I would appreciate it if we could have some kind of answer
Of course.
On, on those, those two big items.
If I may, one last thing, and I appreciate all the time you have spent on this. So the, the mention of possibly funding upwards of $50,000 to do this research in the future was, was mentioned. It would be of great appreciation from the historic commission if the select board would consider that greatly in the future. We would love to have that commitment to potentially do that in the future. Whether or not this bylaw passes or not, that would be of great help to us. We've not had a budget ever, really. So that kind of funding to identify and preserve homes and structures within town would be so appreciated.
Just one last thing, just, I appreciate your knowledge and your knowledge, Mr. Flatter. You obviously are steeped in this, so that was helpful in your question.
Taught history for a number of years.
May I make a comment?
Mr. Flatter, please.
I think of the, the historic preservation bylaw as a public good. I don't think it's a hammer, any more than it would be a hammer against education when you tax people to provide education for the community, or when you provide police services and protective services like the fire department, or the parks and things. This is no different than that, or zoning bylaws that are implemented for a public good of some sort, I would assume. And to refer to this as a hammer, I think is inappropriate, and it's definitely not intended to be a hammer, and in my estimation, it is not a hammer, but a public good.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Kane?
It's asserted to be a public good with absolutely no mechanism to affect an outcome. It's in the way of private property, it gets in the way of someone who's paid their taxes and cut their grass every week and put their trash out on the right day, into what outcome? So we can feel good about it. To me, it's the worst of government policy. It makes us feel good. We're trying. We're not doing anything, but we're trying.
I think it's about protecting the, the, the character of our home. I'm very sorry to interrupt. I think it's about protecting the integrity of our town and our history, and I think that's critically important. When you make a commitment to live in a historic home, you are buying into the town in a different way.
Thank you, Mr. Schwab.
We're trying to, we're trying to have homes that.
Mr. Schwab, I, I mean, I don't want to.
Yes, I just want to say this one last thing. I, I appreciate it. I just, if I could, just five seconds, please. We're trying to stop homes that are historic from being torn down to have developers come in and put up five homes in that place. And I think the town of Shrewsbury is looking for something like that.
Thank you, Mr. Schwab.
Thank you for the time.
I have a couple of questions and comments, if the board will indulge me. On December 12th, so prior to your committee being established, there was a historic preservation bylaw committee that came before this board on December 12th, 2017.
That's correct.
Two members of the sitting board now were on that previous board. I have to admit, the fact that we're going back to so many of the same questions, comments that were made in December of 2017, a year plus later, is troubling to me, that we seem to have not evolved, to my perception, in any great manner. But as part of that conversation that night, it was mentioned that that group had not yet conversed with homeowners of the historic homes. I, and as the minutes reflect, I strongly encouraged that group, and I would hope, since two members of that group are on this group, I strongly suggested that there be some active stakeholder in I strongly suggested that there be some active stakeholder engagement. I see in your minutes, your committee's minutes, your committee was established on March 17th of 2018. As I reviewed the minutes online, those minutes that are available, it appears to me your first meeting wasn't until August. So any rush to judgment here, I mean, I'm curious about five months, that there didn't seem to be any activity. That's entirely up to the committee, but then to try to turn it around, that now the board is running behind, and we, you know, we're the barrier. It surprises me. No, I've been quiet for quite some time. Now I'm going to make some comments. Let me finish. September 17th minutes, the benefit of early public engagement was proposed. November 27th minutes, it is agreed that communication with and input from owners of historic structures will be valuable towards achieving of the long-term objective. So may I ask, why didn't that happen? That's my question.
Well, first to address your issue about the August 30th meeting. I recalled when I applied to the committee that there was an extended date for acceptance, and I think by the time the committee was actually finally established, we did pretty timely meet. We weren't, I was not appointed back in March. I was appointed this summer. And I think it was soon after that that Mr. Kane called together a meeting. As far as the active engagement, we felt we needed, I was not party to the prior presentations that you're talking about. I was not aware of them. So as chair, I felt we needed to hear input from you. I did not know of your prior input. You know, we are using the proposed bylaw from the state. We're using the, we're using an actual bylaw from the town of Walpole, who, which has the same holes that Mr. DiPaolo's pointing out as far as documentation goes, as far as hardship goes. Those are basically unfortunately what's out there. We can do better than that. I don't know, Mr. DiPaolo, what we would say would be a hardship. Because, you know, I know you said you know it when you see it, but it's kind of like pornography. It's, you know, when you see it. I mean, I don't know what criteria we would establish for hardship. We would have to look at it more. And hopefully, we are going to have public members come Thursday night and give us some feedback, I hope.
Well, I noticed in your report to us dated January 22nd of this year, the third to the last bullet point mentions it was discussed that it might be beneficial to have a public meeting of those who own subject historic structures to obtain input. However, it was decided to request the Board of Selectmen to support the SHPC recommendation prior to having a public meeting. Various SHPC members have discussed the proposal with owners of subject historic properties and have received positive feedback. The reason that this is not a public hearing tonight, I guess was, I shouldn't say I guess, was my decision as chair. And the reason I chose not to have this a public hearing tonight was I thought it was vitally important that the board first have a lengthy, some folks here tonight probably too lengthy, discussion with you on this matter before we would open it up to a public hearing. We would, I certainly would have liked to have sat down with you tonight and have heard about your public hearings that you had conducted. You chose to take another route. I wish you had taken, I wish you had taken another path. But I mean, that's where we find ourselves this evening. I have, I guess, essentially two other points. We gave you three charges. Establish a baseline, I think you've done work in that area. Explore reasonable outcomes. One can debate whether they're reasonable, but certainly you've proposed some outcomes. And to explore changes in zoning bylaws. Could you talk a little bit about how you've handled that?
Well, like I say, on the zoning bylaw, it was input greatly from Steve Boullet from the planning board, that he felt that the better entity to propose bylaw changes is the planning board. And he felt that there were significant bylaws that already exist that could be used with a developer to try to develop a property and make adjustments on setbacks or side yards or what have you. So, you know, from the expert we had on our committee, being Steve, we took the feedback that we were not the best people to come up with zoning bylaws. And we felt that with this issue of, where we felt it was important to get passed, we felt the general bylaw requiring majority vote versus a zoning bylaw requiring a two-thirds vote was the better way to go.
Well, if you had decided, if you had made a decision not to work on all of the charges that this board presented, I think it would have been courteous to let inform us of that fact.
We also did research that other towns did not-
Mr. Schraub, you need to be recognized. I don't mean to be rude to you.
I'm terribly sorry.
Well, Mr. Lavo, our report to you basically was letting you know that.
Well, I would prefer that it happened in real time. In the bylaw, proposed bylaw itself, under administration, I'd like to understand this better. The commission is authorized to adopt a schedule of reasonable fees to cover the costs associated with the administration of this law. What are we talking about?
I think the issue was whether or not fees would have to be charged to do some research if we don't have grant money.
And to whom would the fees be charged?
The developer.
The property owner.
Well, the developer, the property owner.
The property owner.
Well, I mean, you might have a developer who has not bought the property yet, who is doing that contingency, as Mr. DiPaolo stated. So it would be whoever's looking to develop the property, not necessarily the owner.
So the individual who might have to wait a year to 15 months also has to pay for that privilege?
To assist the process, yes.
Okay. This has gone on for quite some time, so I think I'm sufficiently satisfied. Anything else for any other members of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Slekman Casman.
Most of my colleagues have pretty much said everything that I had anticipated asking this evening. I do want to tell you that I do appreciate the work that you've done on this, but I just have a couple of thoughts. One is, would the Beal School be included in the list of properties to be preserved, the current building?
Being over 100 years, it potentially could be a preferably preserved building that would have to be looked at by the committee.
The list of provisional historic properties that's in the presentation, have these homeowners or property owners been notified of the public hearing on Thursday?
Not individually, no.
So the only way they would know that it was happening would be if they were on Facebook or the town website?
Correct.
I guess I can anticipate that this might be heading toward the citizen's petition route. My concern is that we've spent an hour, like, trying to figure out the different, sort of the different questions that we had about various aspects of the bylaw. And I just hesitate to think that we would bring something like this to town meeting. I think that there's a lot of work that kind of needs to be done before that, before it's ready. And I do appreciate all the work that you put into it, but I just want to be fair, you know, if we were to bring this forward, a different route from the regular Board of Selectmen way of putting it on the ballot, or on the warrant, rather.
I understand.
Those are just a couple of things I was thinking.
Thank you. So you were, you were asking us this evening if the board would entertain putting this on the annual town meeting warrant, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I think we should talk about that. What's the board's feeling about placing this on the warrant? Mr. Samara, it is not a public hearing. I'll allow you to speak very briefly.
Thank you. I want to give a little bit of perspective.
Very briefly. Oh, could you come to the microphone, please?
This is going to answer a lot of your questions. I've been on the commission for 10 years since it was established, 25 years in total with Historic District Commission. We've been studying this for a long time. There's a lot of confusion. This is, we're not going to be able to demand preservation of anything. What basically happens in most towns is, there's a note, we draw a line of a year. When the town building inspector gets a demolition request, that year keys off a notice to Historic Commission. Historic Commission at that point will probably go in, take photos, examine the property. 99% of the results of a bylaw like this, you don't save a building. You can't possibly demand somebody not to sell it. You can't demand a prospective buyer to do anything. What it does, and what has actually practically happened in this town, is you preserve elements of that building. We were very lucky with the Harlow building, that we immediately got a private person to buy the entire building. The Monroe barn that came down, parts of it went out. We have had calls where informally there isn't a demolition delay, that we've been able to go in and get in in that period of time, photograph it, and then sometimes notify salvage people, advertise it through the commission, and parts of that building are gone. Mr. Kane, you have elements in your house which go back to the origin of your house, which if somebody said that house has to come down, you would fight tooth and nail and say, "No, we want to save the balusters, the fireplace, the mantel, the staircase." That's really what this bylaw is doing. Simple. Demolition delay comes into the building inspector, we get notified, there's got to be some cutoff, so it's a year. We're not going to go in and judge the property. We're probably not going to be able to find a grant to save the property. It's, that's an arduous task. It's giving us a timeframe to record what's there and to try to save the historic elements. Maybe a building would be saved, like the Harlow. Maybe somebody would come along. But it gives us the timeframe to get it out there, advertise it, and all the appropriate journals, because that's what we can do, to see if somebody's interested. It's a small window, and anybody owns a historic property, they have to build that in. They like the property for a reason, they occupy the property for a reason, and therefore, they should anticipate there's going to be this element, and it's just trying to preserve what you're, after all, it's Shrewsbury's history. It's not coming back. So if we can preserve it in pieces, or whatever, we'll do it. It's not to save every single house. You can't do it. In 97%, 95% of the cases, you don't save the building.
Thank you, Mr. Samara.
So that takes some of the onus off of it.
Thank you. Board members, again, the question about-
But I just, interesting observation made by Mr. Samara that every one of those good saves and every bit of that good effort was done without this bylaw. Which I think is to credit the people who have been involved, and that's why I go back to, if we want to make this a priority, I think it's high, it's a better option for us to work toward funding an actual analysis of what's out there and why, and understanding the universe, and then focusing on that. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Thank you. Board members, what do we think about adding this to the annual town meeting warrant?
Mr. Jim.
Slekman DiPaolo.
I'm not going to make a motion. I kind of surprised myself over the past hour or so. I know time is of the essence, but I would, I know it's going to be, it's going to be difficult for, I don't know what the process would be to protect the committee's interest in trying to go forward, but I really, there's some things that came up that I really want to research, and to be honest with you, as much as I thought I was going to be ready to vote tonight, I'm not. So, I mean, I'm going to defer to the rest of the board, but I really would personally like to wait until the 19th. But I understand that the petition would have to begin before that, so just some issues that I want to look into myself before I feel comfortable voting on this going forward.
Well, that's an interesting wrinkle. I think if the board were to pursue that route, the threshold for a petition, we all know, 10 signatures of registered voters, it's not a very high barrier. So, and I'll look to you a little bit, Mr. Musigar. If the board chose to defer voting on whether or not to place it on the warrant tonight, we could receive a citizen's petition before close of business on the 19th. If the board were not to put it on the warrant, the citizen's petition would require the board to put it, to put it on the warrant. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't put the committee at peril. Am I correct?
Just the board will sign on the 26th.
Okay, I'm sorry. So that was, it's the 26th, not the, but the petitions are due on the 19th.
Correct. I'll write as a draft to review.
We're not meeting on the 19th. We're meeting on the 26th.
Right.
So if the board decided to defer to the 26th, it would be in your best interest to get a petition in for the 19th in the event that the board chose not to put it on the warrant. Am I, am I correct with that line of thinking? And do you follow me?
Sure.
Okay, because I mean, we don't want to deny you your rights as petitioners. I understand, I think your preference would be that the board puts it on the warrant, and I'm not sure how the board's going to react to Mr. DiPaolo's suggestion, and maybe I should have waited to think this through until after I saw what it did, but 10 to 20, it's always better to have more than 10, just to make sure everybody's a clean registered voter, but it's still, I would consider a very, your committee is half of it already, or more than half. So we could employ that if the board would be willing to indulge Mr. DiPaolo's request that we put this off to the next meeting. I don't know how anyone feels about that. Slekman Miller.
Mr. Chairman. I'm not inclined to, I don't agree with Mr. DiPaolo. And so I'm not inclined to delay this to another meeting and just, you know, come back here and I'm not sure that in two weeks I'm going to hear anything different that's going to convince me that I will vote to move this forward from the Board of Selectmen to the town meeting. For me, I think there are still too many loose ends. Mr. DiPaolo brought a number of them up. My other colleagues have it as well. When I first read this document, before any of this discussion with my colleagues or any of you, just reading the document, I came away, and my big question was, you know, I had the impression that you had come into this predetermining that the demolition delay was the way to go, and that everything in here, or all the research was done in order to reach that as the outcome. Now, that may or may not be the case, but I just want to share that to you. That even before hearing any of this discussion, that's what I took away from your report. And so I already had some serious issues with that, and I've raised my, you know, my concerns to you. I like the idea that Mr. Kane has suggested that we take a different approach with this in considering how we might fund the research that would, to me, lay the scope and the foundation, so that we do understand the challenges. And not continue to have your committee sort of do all this work and beat your heads against a wall for something that, at least to this point, I think, has not made the case. A case that I think there are many people in town who would like to support, but just can't because of the way that this is, that this is developed and is presented. So from my perspective, I don't see anything changing. But that being said, if Mr. DiPaolo feels he needs more time, and I say that with all due respect, because he thinks that there's some information that might come forward in two weeks to do that, then I would certainly be willing to vote that way, so that you could have that opportunity to get everything you need to know. And I will also continue to be open-minded in that process.
I'm not going to wait for it. I decided I was going to research some of it myself. So it's, I'll defer it to the board. I mean, the practical implication of waiting until, say, the 26th is that the board, if it voted in the affirmative to put it on, it's kind of like tacit support for the petition, I mean, for the bylaw. If it's a petition, then obviously the board is signaling it's not going to support it. So I mean, it doesn't mean it can't go to town meeting either way. I think it depends, you know, how- I think it, it depends, you know, how people feel about it. But I, I'll defer to, if the board wants to vote tonight, I'll vote tonight, but...
Okay. Sleckman Cassavat.
I think this is a question of communication, and I have a lot of, I hear a lot of unanswered questions. I think there's still more work to be done on the bylaw. I don't think it's ready for prime time. I'm concerned that the, the property owners listed in the document that was presented to us haven't been notified of the public hearing and may not know until too late that it even happened, so they might not have an opportunity to weigh in with their thoughts. And I would really like to know what the outcome of the public hearing is and how that might change or influence the bylaw as it's written, and maybe some of the criteria that are included in the bylaw. And I think that those things have to happen before we put it on the town meeting warrant. That's not to say that it will never make it onto warrant. It could go the citizen's petition route, of course, but I'm just not comfortable. I don't feel like it's thoroughly ready to go.
Mr. Chairman.
Sleckman Kane.
Philosophically, I find it beyond troubling. As it stands, all we've done this evening is poke holes in it. There are a tremendous amount of unanswered questions that perhaps over time could be answered, fine. The reality is that the committee has achieved its objective, it has provided a report, it has posted a public hearing for later this week. There is no effective way to give people sufficient notice so they understand what is at risk if they're at one of these homes. So the public hearing, to the extent it happens, will be loaded with, guess what? People who think this is a great idea, because that's the way loaded public hearings work. So I think if, if the dean of the delegation wants more time to shed light on this, Mr. Chairman, I say we continue it to our next meeting, let the committee hold its public hearing, they can report back. It'll be 95-5 in favor, trust me, and we can go from there.
Okay. Is the board, is the board willing to postpone action on this matter to our next meeting?
I, I am...
Mr. DePaolo is, Mr. Kane seems to be.
Out of respect for you, I will.
Miss Sleckman DePaolo already indicated.
It's fine with me.
I don't think we need to take a vote, because we'll just put this on the agenda for the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Can I, can I just say, I expect to use the next two weeks to really look into two, what I would consider important issues on this, and I will bring that information back to the board. I'm, I'm not going to sit on this and just think about it over a cup of coffee. If I didn't have something I really wanted to do, I wouldn't be asking for this.
Okay. So thank you very much for coming in. We appreciate your attention.
You want us to show up at that hearing, or...
Well, you're certainly welcome to attend, and yes, we would like you to come. We may have some questions for you. We might want to hear, we, we may want to hear on a report on what the public hearing is. Obviously, if we could get some written documents in advance, that would be very helpful, and we'll see you on the 26th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Great for the work you put in.
Board members, two things relative to the agenda. First of all, I think we're going to, we're going to take a five-minute recess, because I want to take a five-minute recess. And, but we will then go immediately to item nine, the public hearing, the dog hearing. So it is now 8:29. I'd like to call us back to order at 8:35. So we are in recess. Okay, we're back in open session. We are skipping to item nine, public hearing, Melinda Springer of 47 Memorial Drive pursuant to MGL Chapter 140, Section 157. Let me lay out the procedure that we're going to follow. The selectmen have scheduled this dog hearing as a result of a complaint that it's received from a Mr. David Roy. We will, at this hearing tonight, take testimony and consider evidence to determine whether there is a dog or dogs owned or controlled by Ms. Melanie Springer residing at 47 Memorial Drive, which may be found to be nuisance dogs or dangerous dogs pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 157. The dogs in question are Bruno, tag number 1181, and Poppy, tag number 1182, residing at 47 Memorial Drive. Now, the law requires that the Board of Selectmen investigate complaints of this nature, and also requires us to conduct an examination of oath of the complainant. So what that means is I'm going to need to ask all those who plan to testify or may be thinking about testifying to be sworn in at the beginning of the hearing. So regardless of which side you might be on a matter, I will ask in a moment that anyone who wishes to be heard at the appropriate time or is considering speaking to stand up, and then I will swear you in as a group. So with that, anyone who's planning to testify this evening or is even considering that they might testify this evening, please stand. Please raise your right hands. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please state, "I do."
I do.
Thank you. Be seated. So here's the order in which we're going to proceed. I will first ask the complainant to testify, Mr. David Roy. I will then ask to hear comments of supporting witnesses to the complainant. I will then ask that the animal control officer, Leona Pease, speak to her observations. We will then hear from the dog owner, Ms. Springer, and/or attorney, depending on how you wish to proceed. We will then allow Ms. Springer or her attorney the opportunity to question the witnesses. In all cases, any question should be directed through me, and I ask that everyone remain courteous. Once the questioning is concluded, I will then ask Ms. Springer if she has any witnesses, and if so, we will hear their testimony, and the complainant would have the opportunity to ask questions as well. At the conclusion of the testimony, I will ask the board for a motion to close the hearing, and then the board will go into a public deliberation phase in which we will make a finding. As I mentioned, this finding and deliberation will be done in open session, and a motion will be made by a member of the Board of Selectmen as to what our findings are. We have by law three potential findings that we could make. Potential finding one is the board finds that the dog is not a nuisance, or dog or dogs is or are not nuisances or dangerous, and the complaint is dismissed. Second option the board can entertain is that the dog is deemed to be, or dogs are deemed to be nuisance. And third is that the dog or dogs are deemed to be dangerous. If the dog is found to be a nuisance, I will then ask the opinion of our animal control officer to make a recommendation to the board on how to best mitigate the dog's behavior. If the dog is found to be, or dogs are found to be dangerous, there are another, a number of other actions that may be taken, but I don't see any need to get into that unless, if that determination is made, we will certainly review all the details of that. Regardless, if the board makes a decision that the dog owner feels aggrieved by, they may bring a petition in district court within 10 days of this hearing to have it reviewed by the court or a magistrate of the court. Does everyone understand basically the ground rules? Okay. So we're going to begin, and I am first going to ask the complainant to come forward, Mr. Kindly have a seat at the table. You may, whatever you're most comfortable with, sir.
That's fine.
And again, kindly identify yourself for the record.
Okay. I'm David Roy of 26 Patriot Lane.
Okay, Mr. Roy, please tell us why you've brought this complaint to the board.
Okay, so if, as evidenced in the complaint that I filed, there's a log of the barken and the duration. I've continued that log since that point in time. And first of all, I like to say that I'm a dog lover, and I'd rather have this controlled than not a nuisance. But the barken during the summer was 24 hours a day. I, you know, I've been waking up at 3:00 in the morning as it penetrates the house, and my bedroom's on the back of the house. Even with the door closed, you can hear the dog bark. Since, since February, there's a noticeable change in the frequency and the duration. So that indicates to me that it is a controllable event, but uncontrolled, it is a definite nuisance that's disturbing, as you can also see from Leona's report, that there have been a number of people calling in and complaining. So I also have a recording of a two-hour barken situation. I didn't bring it tonight because I didn't think people would want to listen to it, but I can make it available, just as proof of the duration and the loudness of it. So, you know, a number of neighbors have all been impacted. I, I can hear it a mile away when I'm walking over on, like, Gold Street, Cherry Street, or some other subdivisions. You know, it's a distinctive bark, and I think that's, that's the facts, that there's, you know, documented excessive frequency and duration. It's, it's been way better the last couple months. In fact, there's days that I have no observations, period. You know, part of that, I think, is attributable to the weather, the coldness. You know, during, during the summer, they let the dogs out all night, and it's, it's noticeable at that point. So that's what we fear, is that a repeat, this could be a, a weather-related decrease in the barken, but I, I think they might have put a bark collar on. It's not always evident, because you can still hear periods, but they're, they're much shorter duration at this point right now.
Any questions from members of the board for Mr. Roy?
I guess I have one right now. When you say the dogs are barking, like, here, 1:00 to 3:00 o'clock continuously, do you mean literally continuously? Are they barking, they stop for a little bit, they start 15 minutes later, they start again?
They stop for a little bit.
It's a time period they're outside, probably, that.
Yes, so during the summer, September, on, they, they're out 20, it was observable that they're out 24 hours a day, because they were barking at all times of the night and day. Now it's, you, you can tell when they're let out, or you can... Now, it's, you can tell when they're let out, or you can tell, like, on Sundays or weekends, you know, I have a frequency distribution, you know, based on the log, that you can see that there's different behaviors on weekends than there are on the weekdays.
Okay, just one other question right now. You said it seemed to slow down, and you think it's because of the weather, but the log that I'm looking at goes from December till middle of January. It's got to be 20 or 30 times that.
Yeah. I'm just saying since.
You think that, are you saying that that is less than what you had before? Because that would be a lot, if that's what happened.
Yeah, my current log now is less than what I have documented there now. It's improved.
Okay.
You know, I'm not disputing that. I'm not trying to, you know, insinuate the situation. I'm just trying to share observations.
That's another question. Have you approached the owners and talked to them about this?
I considered it, but if you go to their, beginning of their property, it says, "No trespassing under penalty of law," or, you know, there's a sign that says, "Do not go." And also, you know, you hear these big dog, or these, this loud barking, and you don't know whether they're locked up or some stuff, but there's definitely a "do not trespass" sign at the beginning of the property.
Did anybody in any way try to contact the owners, or was all the interaction between the people who were aggrieved and the police department or the animal control officer? I'm just trying to understand if there was ever any dialogue.
Yeah, so what I did, from February till the end of September, I was working in Washington, DC. So when I came back in September, I started hearing it. I was only here on some weekends, but my neighbors had already filed complaints with the animal control officer, and I just started taking the log from the point that I had the ability to observe it and collected the voices of the neighborhood.
No, okay, but do you, do you have any knowledge that anybody tried to actually contact the owners?
Well, I've asked the people that are here and that have, you know, I went to, you know, sent the emails out, and there was no indication that anybody made an attempt to contact.
Okay.
If there was, it would have been Charlie Cass person.
Not saying he had to, I just wanted to know.
Yeah, there's no one, to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
Selectman Miller?
Chairman, Mr. Roy, I'm just, when you use the term "summer," what months are you referring to?
So it's just when the weather was warmer, once it turned, like, below freezing, or that, when it's snowing, and, or, you know, freezing rain and stuff, that behavior changed.
Okay, because you said summer, but then another time you said September.
Well, you know that.
So I'm just trying to get a timeframe of when you've been hearing the barking.
Yeah, so.
Because I would think summer is from whatever date it starts in June through whatever date it ends.
Well, I don't think that they moved in until September or sometime around there, because that's when the neighborhood started noticing the difference.
And then my question would be, what would you consider acceptable in terms of barking from a neighborhood dog? So when do you start to log? Is it from the first bark? Just, what do you, what in your mind, you know, do you consider would be acceptable?
So when I first hear the bark, I write down the time. If it's persistent, I leave it open. If it's short duration, I just put a little exclamation. I didn't have to do that on the log that I submitted. I have it on this log now, that there's just bursts, but there are periods that, you know, extend over an hour to two hours still to date.
Thank you.
So like on February 20th, it went from 7:32 a.m. to 10 a.m. From, on 2/27, it went from 8:55 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. From, on March 1st, it went from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And on 3/2, it was just at 12:30. On 3/3, it was just at 12:25 for a short duration.
Okay, thank you.
Selectman DePaul, did you have something else?
So I think, back to Mrs. Mills' question, what would you consider to be a reasonable amount of time for a dog to bark? I mean, is it five minutes? Is it 10 minutes? Is it? I'm just trying to.
I think anything less than a half hour would be tolerable. I mean, you can talk to some of my other neighbors that, you know, I'm more not in the house all the time, but the, when I am, it's bothersome to me. You can hear it over the TV or anything. It's disturbing. It become, it almost starts to drive you crazy.
You're saying anything under a half hour?
I think that would be reasonable.
Over what timeframe?
A half hour.
He's saying the dog barking consistently for half an hour.
You're saying the dog barking consistently for half an hour.
Right, and then stops.
Over what span, for four or five hours?
Yeah, so.
I mean, half an hour in four or five hours?
If they're burst, and then it's quiet.
Okay.
That's, you know, so a couple hours quiet if.
So what people might consider normal dog barking, I guess? Like, bark once in a while?
Our neighborhood is full of dogs, you know, and not one of them barks.
I'm all set for it now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roy.
Okay.
Are there any other individuals who would like to testify in support of the complainant? Sir, kindly stand or have a seat?
I'll have a seat, is that okay?
Absolutely. And again, if you could kindly identify yourself for the record.
Sure, my name is Rob Luke, and I live at 28 Patriot Lane with my wife, Deborah. And I'd like to do two things. I'd like to read a statement. I sent a copy of the letter into the Selectmen earlier in the week. I'd like to read that. I'd also like to, I took an audio of the dog today barking. The dog barked four times. I came out on my front porch and took an audio. Can I play the audio?
Sure.
This is a good distance away from their property, by the way. We can hear the dogs barking. TV is in our back room in our house, and the houses are very well insulated. They're new homes, and you can, when the TV is going, the washing machine's going, and the dryer's going, and we can hear the dogs barking. I don't think that's reasonable. And supposedly, the dogs, according to some testimony you may hear, the dogs have these bark collars on to prevent them from barking. Clearly, they're not working, if that's the case. I'm just going to read you.
This is a letter that you borrowed.
It's a letter that I sent, I just want to read it. Dear Board of Selectmen, we are butters to 47 Memorial Drive, Route 140, to that house with the barking dogs in question. My wife and I have lived at 28 Patriot Lane for over seven years, enjoying a tranquil retirement until 47 Memorial Drive was sold to new owners. It was then that our world was turned upside down. We are in our home all day, every day, perhaps unlike others, who may be away at work all day long. With my wife's recent shoulder surgery, it's even more difficult to be out. We can hear the aforementioned dogs barking for hours on end, even when we are watching television at the rear of our residence. Feels like fingernails being scraped along a blackboard, or someone pricking you with a pin over and over again. I can't imagine anyone living at 47 Memorial being able to stand the constant barking either. It's possible that the topography of the area exacerbates the situation. The barking dogs are located on a hill, while Patriot Lane is in a valley below. The sound seems to be funneled down to us. I'm concerned that the ACO, who was, who has retired and is currently filling in part-time, has not been a friend to our cause. We may have aggravated her and burned our bridges by making numerous calls to her and the police for help. Calls sometimes worked for a short time, but the barking soon continued for hours. I'm told that her van was spotted parked on our street, listened for the dogs recently, when it was obvious that they were indoors. I suspect her actions are based on the meeting coming up. I have not seen her van here in the past. Whatever has been done to this point to resolve the barking has not worked. We beg you to help stop this from continuing and allow us to enjoy our remaining retirement years in a quiet environment. With kind thoughts, Robert and Deborah Luke. The only other thing that I've done is I've taken some pictures, which I think you should have a copy of. I emailed them to the Secretary earlier, Valerie, and this aerial views that show the, our house and the homes on Patriot Lane, along with the location of their property. If you haven't seen this, if you could pass it along, I think it may be helpful, because you can see the proximity. Sometimes if you're driving on 140, you don't realize that their property faces us, and that's where all the noise, it's funneled to us. The only other thing I did was I took a picture of the fence that, we were told it was professionally installed. Gary, that's supposed to keep the noise out. That was professionally installed, and thank you all, I talked with the contractor, and passed it along. That's all I have.
Any questions from members of the Board for Mr. Luke?
I have a couple of questions.
Selectman DePaul?
I probably missed it, but where were you physically when you recorded that?
On my front porch.
On your front porch?
Yes.
Is your, you've got to forgive me. Is your front porch the driveway side, or is your front porch?
The driveway side.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd like to ask you the same question I asked Mr. Roy. What's a reasonable amount of time for a dog to bark?
Certainly, I think, less than a half an hour of barking. You know, if you put a dog out to go to the bathroom, he does whatever he has to do, I think, and if the dog's barking to come in, then you bring the dog in. I don't think you leave the dog out to bark when you have an environment where you're a nuisance to people that are around you. As was stated earlier, we have many dogs in our, in our facility. We have 90 residences at Adam Farm, and there is no barking dogs that bother anyone in our facility.
I have to ask, are you saying there's no other dogs that bark in your, in your complex?
That's correct, for.
None.
For greater than a half an hour.
Okay, all right. So there are dogs that bark?
Not that I've heard.
You just said for not greater than a half an.
I'm not saying.
I don't, I'm trying to understand what your definition of bark is. It's barking for a half, half an hour. I let my dog out, he barks for a half an hour, I let him in. Two hours later, I let my dog out, he barks for a half an hour, and I let him in? Are you saying, like, a half an hour over the course of the day?
The dogs at Adam Farm, I believe, have to be on a leash.
Okay, but that doesn't stop them from barking. But what is, I don't understand the half hour. I really didn't understand it when Mr. Roy said it. What are you talking about? Are you talking about a dog barking consistently for a half an hour?
Just like you heard on the recording.
That the dog did that for a half an hour?
Yes.
Okay. And your testimony is, because I really want to be clear, other dogs bark, but not for that length of time?
Again, there's a lot of dogs in our area.
I understand.
In our facility. I don't hear dogs barking. You know, I know people take them out, they do their thing, and I think they walk them and whatever, and bring them back, but I just don't hear them barking. Certainly, I don't hear them, heard them, I just don't. I think they're all well behaved.
Do you?
We live down the end of a cul-de-sac.
Right.
Which is adjacent to their property.
Right, I know.
Maybe that's the case.
I know, I know the site.
Yeah.
So what are you, a couple hundred feet from the, from the barn?
Yeah, I'd say, yeah, probably a couple hundred feet anyways.
So.
Maybe 300 feet.
It's a treed area between you and them. It's not real wide, but it's there. In the fall, was it more muffled than it is now, because there's no leaves?
Well, we weren't around in the fall. We were on a cruise.
Okay.
We didn't return home until December, and that's when we, you know, when the leaves were down, and we suddenly.
Okay.
Heard it all.
One last question. So I think it's okay to ask this. What would you think would be an appropriate resolution to this?
Get the dogs to stop barking.
For how long? Can they go outside and bark at all?
No, they could go out for, as I said, less than a half an hour, and I think we could tolerate it. For hours on end, which is what they've been doing, is just not tolerable.
I'm not saying it is or it isn't. I see the amount of time you say the dogs are barking, so I understand what you're saying.
And I think if you have, if you have one of those collars on, supposedly, a dog barks, it sends out a signal, hurts the dog's ears, and only the dogs can hear it, they stop barking, and over a period of time, the barking goes, is it controlled? And I just don't think they're using collars.
Well, we'll find that out.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Luke? Selectman Cass, I have it.
Just so that, to go back to your Selectman Apollo's half an hour, I think what happens is, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, dogs bark, but because it's a length of time that doesn't really hit your radar screen, it probably feels like there aren't dogs barking in your neighborhood. But because this barking, from what you're telling us, is going on for a significant amount of time without a break, you're noticing it.
That could very well be.
So if the dog is barking every time it's out, and it doesn't stop barking, it's consistently barking, but then it's brought back inside, and the barking stops, and you're able to sort of have a time period where there is no barking, and then it happens again for another half an hour, do you see that as tolerable?
If they let, if they come in for a certain period of time, and they go back out, and they bark for another half an hour?
Well, those dogs go out multiple times a day.
You know, I would really like to see the dog, the barking cease, be under control. The big dogs that really have this tremendous bark.
Thank you.
Anything else from the Board? Mr. Luke, to one of your other comments, I just want to say that besides being one of the most proficient animal control officers who responds to complaints, they're not aggravations, they're part of the job. Animal Control Officer Pease is also a kind and gentle soul, and she doesn't aggravate easily.
Okay, I'm sure she is.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is anyone else who cares to testify on behalf of the complainant? Okay. Let me get back to my.
Charles Cass, person, 18 Patriot Lane.
Yes, sir.
I only have, I don't have a log like David Roy had, but just the past few days, Saturday, they were out for a couple of hours. They didn't bark steady for two hours, but five or 10 minutes at a time, then they'll stop, and then start again. Sunday, we had freezing rain, so I have to pray for freezing rain now. At least it keeps the dogs in, they don't bark. Monday, they were out for an hour and a half, barking off and on, and today, they were out for about 40 minutes, barking again, off and on, not, not steady.
Thank you. Any questions? Selectman DePaul?
What addressed you with that?
18 Patriot.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Any other individuals who wish to testify on behalf of the complainant? Okay. See, oh, I'm sorry, sir, kindly come forward.
My name is Jane Hedberg.
Hi, my name's Ed Hedberg.
Good evening.
And we live at 34 Patriot Lane.
Okay, and you also sent us a letter, I believe.
We did.
Okay.
Yes.
What would you like to tell us?
So.
Of course, thank you very much for taking the time to help us with this.
In hearing their comments, this has been going on since last fall. My husband. My husband works full-time during the day. I work full-time, but I work from home. There have been times that I have an off-site business office in Marlboro. There have literally been times during the day that I have packed my work up, gotten in my car, and driven to my off-site business office because I could no longer stand the noise in the house. My office is on the opposite side of the house from their property. There were times before I started calling animal control and police dispatch that we would be talking about eight, 10, 12, 14 hours of this barking going on for, apparently, Dave, I didn't know that this was going on even overnight when he was having problems It has gotten better. I attribute that to this scheduled hearing. That's what I attribute that, the change in the behavior of the dogs. I attribute that to this. And as far as the amount of time that we would find reasonable, like Mr. Casperson said, I just want the barking to stop. I can't say it's okay for the dogs to go outside for 10 or 15 minutes, put a timeline on the number of hours between how many times they go out, and say that that's acceptable. Because given the history of this, I just don't see that that's something that's going to happen. And that's all of ours, frankly, biggest fear in this whole thing, is that how many months we've gone on with this, and they've known because of the complaints, they've had the police department there, they've had Leona there, yet it didn't seem to change the behavior at all. And I'm not talking about over a period of couple of weeks, I'm talking about periods of months and months and months, that they knew that this was a problem, and it never changed any of that behavior.
And those calls, I mean, we did call, we called the dog officer and the police, but there have been times where we say, we just don't want to call and bother anybody. I mean, this, it took a lot to come here and do this and complain. We don't like to complain, and, you know, there are a lot of times where we just didn't call, or they would be barking for, you know, hours on end, and then we, all right, we have to call, but we just don't want to bother people. But it's just affecting our quality of life, and it's, we'd like to have it stop. One other thing about the dogs, I have not heard any dogs in our place bark. Do people walk their dogs along the street? I ride my bike, and I go out, and I see people walking their dogs, and they don't bark. I have not heard, I can say I have not heard a dog in that place bark.
I can second that, and we've been there for six years, and that's not something that anybody out of the ninety units at Adams Farm would tolerate. That would just not, it would never be tolerated there.
Selectmen DePaulo.
I was out there, and I wanted to make sure I understood what the spaces are and stuff. And in one of the, part of one of the complaints, or one of the logs from the animal control officer, said the dogs were standing on that landing on the barn. I'm assuming that's the one that faces your property that way?
Patriot Lane.
Is that was supposed to have been addressed?
Right.
Was it?
I believe that those dogs are no longer, that's a second floor landing.
Right.
I do not believe that the dogs are being let out that door anymore.
Okay.
But that.
The reason I'm asking is, you see, it's almost like, you know, being on a mountain yelling down, I can see where it would be loud.
Right. But even coming down from that landing to the yard.
Right, it's higher.
It's still a lot, it's still a lot higher. You know, their property is higher than where we sit.
Yep.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other individuals who'd like to testify on behalf? Yes, sir.
Hello.
Hi, how are you? Kindly have a seat.
I'm Alan Kraus, I live at 12 Patriot Lane.
Did you get that? I kind of spoke over.
12 is not as directly affected by the barking dogs, but I am one of two dog owners on Patriot Lane, and I am sensitive to, particularly sensitive to the continuous barking, because we lived through this in Northborough about eight years ago, when a butter had two of the same identical breed of dog continuously barked. And it was only after the dog officer attempted to have the owners control the dogs to no avail, that the, we and our other neighbors went to the Board of Selectment for resolution, and that was eventually resolved. So I'm here mainly to support my neighbors that are more directly affected. We have a miniature poodle, which we would walk, my wife or I would walk down Patriot Lane, particularly to visit Charlie, and I don't go in that direction anymore, because anything that the dogs can see or hear sets them off barking. So a vehicle drives down, dogs start barking, and it just goes on and on and on until they're either taken in or whatever. So I've read the dog officer's recommendations. It's hard to say how long is a dog barking appropriate, because if it's a half an hour on, a half an hour off, a half an hour on, that's a little, I think, too much barking. I'm not a big favor of bark collars. I would hope that they would be used to train the dogs to curtail their barking. But if that's the only solution to the problem, then I guess that would be it. I think the dog officer has been responsive. More recently, the barking has curtailed, perhaps it's because of the notice of the public hearing, I don't know, but I'm just concerned that if action isn't taken as recommended by the dog officer or animal control officer, then what's to stop it from starting again in the near future? So thank you for your attention, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for members of the board?
I do, I might as well keep it up. So, Mr. Kraus, you're a little further up the road. Your neighbors that spoke are down in the, kind of the hollow or whatever. I'm just curious, do you think it's any more muffled where you are?
Oh, yeah, it is, but I can still hear them bark inside the house with all the windows and doors closed.
Okay. I kind of thought that would be the case, I just wanted to verify it.
Because the barn is further down the road.
Right. Right, okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other folks who wish to, yes, ma'am, please come forward. Hi, please have a seat, and please identify yourself.
Thank you for having us here. I'm not a complainer, so it doesn't make me feel comfortable doing it. I'm at 14 Patriot Lane, so I'm a little.
Name, please.
14 Nancy, 14 Patriot Lane. I'm a little further down the hill, so I don't hear them inside as much. I go outside, you know, you're doing some yard work, you hear the barking, and it's, I didn't realize how bad it was. Last fall, I was raking some leaves, just doing a little bit yard work. They do that for us, which I like to get out sometime and do that stuff. I had a headache, and even I had friends come over a couple of weeks ago, and they said to me, is there a kennel in your neighborhood? Because we have these dogs barking. I go, no, it's a couple of dogs up the street. It does get tiresome, and I do feel sorry for my neighbors that are further down the street, because some of them aren't even sleeping at night. I think a dog is barking because they want, they're social animals. I had a dog, I had a cocker spaniel who I lost last March, and he was my best friend. I lost my husband, and he was my best friend. And I just think a dog barks because they like company, or they're cold, or they're hungry. I think, you know, just to leave dogs out, I actually felt bad for them, because it's been cold. I brought my trash can out, and I've heard them, and it's been cold, and I thought, these dogs out there in the cold, that's not fair, and that's not right, I think, to the animals. So I just wanted to say that, and thank you, people, and be there for my neighbors who really are having a hard time with this.
Any questions for members of the board for Mrs. Crimmens?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to testify? Okay, it appears not. So at this time, I'm going to ask for Animal Control Officer Pease to come forward, please. Kindly have a seat. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Leona Pease, I'm the animal control officer for Shrewsbury. And I have been aware of this barking issue for a while. I have, let's see, these two dogs are kept onto the property on a electric fence, so they are not wandering off the property, but they are used to being outside, and they're used to protecting the property where they were living before. So they do bark. I have not, I have been there, and I have witnessed barking on one occasion that I was at the home, and one occasion that I was on Patriot Lane. But I have not heard the extent of barking that these people have had to put up with. The first time I arrived, I noted that there were two big dogs, and they were in front of the barn in the parking area. And they, they barked when I arrived, but they settled down, and I went up and I spoke to Mr. Springer, and asked him to bring them in if they were barking, and he said he would do that. As I say, by the time I was up at the house, they were not barking. And I have been up, and I've seen both Mr. and Mrs. Springer, and asked them to bring them in if they're barking. I did go down to Patriot Lane, and I listened. I've been down there twice with a sound meter that I have bought, because I wanted to find out the ambient noise level, and find out how much above the noise level that the dogs were. And when I've been just sitting there, one day I was there, it was very, very windy, and the ambient level was between 40 and 49. And that day, of course, the dogs didn't bark for me. And the next time I was there, again, it was staying in the 40s, 40 to 46 or so, and I was speaking to Mrs. Springer on the phone about the dogs, and I didn't catch the first bark that, I said, oh, I gotta go, the dogs are barking, and so I didn't catch the spike on my meter for the first bark. The second bark, it went to 48, which was within the ambient. I do understand that barking is very annoying. I, I've just not been able to be there when the dogs were barking to hear the extent that the people have had to put up with. They are a dog that is specifically bred to protect property, so that is part of the reason that they bark. They are going to alert for anything that is unusual. The Springers have been having a lot of work done on the home that they bought, so there've been a lot of strangers there. So that has exacerbated the problem. They did say that within the last two or three weeks, they have put the electric collars on them for the barking, and it sounds like it is helping.
Selectmen DePaulo, do you have a comment or a question?
The dogs are being protective, but I just want to be clear, they're being a nuisance, they're not vicious, right?
Oh, they did not show any sign of being vicious at all when I have been there. I have not walked inside the electric fence, which I will not do on anyone's property, but no, they were just, they're just protective with alerting. That's how they protect.
So I know they're big dogs, but I could see from one of the pictures we had, is it realistic to think that they're going to stay, they're going to want to stay inside for the better part of the day? Is that kind of a dog?
That, that kind of a dog, because of its big heavy coat, likes to be out in the cool weather. It is not, they do have a barn area they could bring them into if we set specific times of the day that they were to be confined, but these type of dogs are quite happy outside 24 hours a day.
They could bring them in the barn if they were home. If they're not home and the dogs are outside, that's obviously not going to be an option. They'd have to be kept inside when the owner's at home.
That would be one solution, for sure.
If there was a stockade fence like in the picture, which obviously needs to be fixed, if there was a fence where they couldn't see, it'd be difficult for them to see outside of that area, would they be less likely to bark?
They would be less likely to bark, yes.
They're not just responding to noise. I mean, they probably will a certain amount, but they're not just responding to noise. A lot of visual stimulation for them?
It's both, yes. They are not the type of dog that will be barking to demand to come in the house, because they are not used to being a house dog. So it's not that kind of barking. It is response to sight or hearing noises.
If that's the case, would they be barking constantly for a half an hour, 20 minutes? I mean, it seems like usually as the dog gets stimulated by a noise or whatever, eventually the stimulation goes away and they stop. That doesn't sound like that's what's happening here.
They've been having a lot of people on their property that the dogs don't know, and probably going back and forth to the vehicles. I do not know that that is what's caused the problem, but I do assume that that would be something that would stimulate the dogs to be protective and barking.
Do you know if the, there was some talk that dogs were barking very late at night, into the night, maybe overnight? Do you know if the police were able to verify that the dogs were out late at night? I know you can't work 24 hours a day, I was just wondering if they actually at any point went out to.
They have been out in the evening. I do expect that they would have found the dogs out, because these were not dogs that they're used to putting away at night. I think it would be a good thing to put them away at night.
The dogs, this kind of a dog would normally stay out all night long?
Yeah, they have access to the barn through a door.
They walk in and out, okay.
And they walk in and out. So there are horse stalls in the barn from when the Collinses lived there. It might be a good idea to put them in the barn in a horse stall at night.
Mr. Chairman?
Selectman Casperson.
So are these, is this breed typically just a high-barking breed? Like, lots of barking?
They are a more likely to alert breed, yes.
Okay. So I have a breed of dog that's much smaller, but also will bark if there's something that the dog feels needs to be, a reason to protect her area, right? So when I put my dog in her crate at night and I cover the crate, she stops barking, and we can come and go. We had smoke detectors going off in the house, and the dog didn't say a word. I'm wondering if the dogs are trying to protect this area, and they're feeling threatened all the time by the workmen, and the homeowners seem willing to put up some sort of fencing, and they have this huge area that they feel like they need to be protecting all the time. And they have this huge area that they feel like they need to be protecting all the time. What if somebody built like an enclosure so they weren't always seeing what was going on? And then maybe the dogs would feel like they only had to protect a smaller space. Like even if you were using a fence like this, they'd have like an area, it could even, and I don't know the property, but still have access to that barn. But maybe if they didn't feel like they needed to protect the whole yard and that whole vast area, they'd be less likely to always be on guard and barking.
It would make them less likely to be, if they cannot see something, they're less likely to bark at, yes.
And as, just one more comment. I think it's reasonable if the dogs are barking overnight that they would need to come inside somewhere and not be able to come back out. Because I just, if this is actually what's happening, I just don't think it's fair to the neighborhood that there's a dog barking all night long. So maybe some restriction on the hour at which the barking needs, the dog needs to be contained for the night.
Yes, I think that would be a good idea. I did not put that on my list, but I think that would be a good thing to, to put on, yes.
Any other questions for the Animal Control Officer?
Not right now. Mr. Chairman, let me ask you a procedural question. I'd like to understand an attitude or a thought of the officer. Should I wait until everyone has testified from years of experience? As the presiding officer?
I think we could entertain that question now, although I'm sure we could find time to do it later if you prefer.
Leona, do you think from your experience in town and your experience with this case that the dog is a nuisance? Well, the dogs are.
I usually am not the one that makes that decision.
I know.
I think from the amount of calls that we have been getting that they are a nuisance to the neighbors at this time, yes.
And I keep hearing how these people moved in. You know, did the dogs live out of town prior to living at this residence?
Prior to living here, this, the family had a farm at the end of a dead end road. The dogs were roaming, I don't know if they had an electric fence there, but they were roaming the area. And they were protecting livestock.
Do we know if in that community, there were ever any complaints about excessive barking?
I do not know the answer to that. They said that they lived at the end of a road with nobody around.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for now.
Thank you.
We may be back. No, sir, we, you've testified and we're gonna continue moving now. Well, I had asked previously, sir.
She testified, so I wanted to hear what she had to say so I could add my, my spiel. I was concerned.
Come forward, sit at the table, please identify yourself.
I'm Ronald Douglas, I live at 395 Grafton Street, Shrewsbury. I live in the hollow behind Patriot Lane. Right, I was, my concern here is what threats are these dogs? Because I raise kids. I've been here fifty years. I've been in that house that long. My ten-year-old goes out to the bus stop at, at twelve after eight. I do not hear a dog. I don't wanna see a dog. If the dog is, is retained to a aluminum fence, right? And I pick, I take her from the school bus at, at, at three-thirty, I still don't hear a dog, right? Maybe my area is buffed by, by leaves and trees. But my, mine was, I was summoned here because I wanted to know if there's, if there's some sort of threat with a dog. I don't wanna put my ten-year-old in my backyard or my kids, right? And have some sort of threat. So that's why I'm sitting here. I have no inkling with the Springers who, how long they've been there, I don't care. I know I'm the top dog. I've been, I've been there longer than anybody. My job is gonna be continuous. Mine is in the fourth grade. My job is to raise kids. The school department don't like me, but my job is going to kill, continue to raise kids. And if there's a threat with highway safety, or, or they're gonna run my mouth off. But I don't, I don't hear this, this dog issue. And I don't know any of these people. That's, that's my saying. I don't know, have any side with the Springers. But if she's got dogs there and they're, they're a threat, don't come down to Memorial Drive because you're gonna get killed. You're gonna get on to Grafton Street and I can't put my, my ten-year-old down there because she's gonna get killed.
Mr. Douglas, there has been no complaint that these dogs are a threat or dangerous?
Yeah, a threat.
This issue is about barking?
Well, I didn't know what the issue was.
Well, we appreciate you coming in and sharing your thoughts with us.
I didn't know what the issue was.
And as I said, we thank you for coming in.
That's why I wanted to hear from the dog officer. And now I add my spiel.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'd like to hear from the owner of the dog, Ms. Melanie Springer and/or counsel. Please approach, have a seat. Please, then you know the drill, please identify yourself.
I know, part of the drill I generally do is to get to question the other people too.
I'm not gonna allow that.
Okay. So first, I just want to preliminarily say.
Could you kindly identify yourself?
Oh, I signed in. Penelope Cathwalla, attorney for Melinda Springer.
Melinda Springer.
And?
Phoenix.
Very good, thank you.
And also a Shrewsbury resident, myself. The first preliminary thing I did want to say was, I'm sure you have the original letter that was sent by Mr. Roy that was dated January twenty-fifth. And a number of those individuals who spoke here today signed on to his letter. And in addition to that, he submitted some papers, photographs, and put in some Cherry Street, two miles away. And he gave some sort of directions, that sort of thing. When Mrs. Springer and Mr. Springer received this complaint letter or a copy of this letter, she did respond back to the town manager. And one of the first things she said was, because Mr. Roy had said, well, all through the summer, I couldn't sleep and the dog was barking all night and all that sort of thing. And I think that the clerk at least asked, well, what do you consider summer? And I'm sure you saw, of course, Mrs. Springer's answer was like, well, wait a minute. First of all, the summer is the summer. And by the way, we bought this house at the end of September and we did not move in until the middle of November. So some of these assertions that Mr. Roy and the people who signed his petition, the same individuals who are on his road, I understand that's just one road, Patriot Lane and then part of Hamilton Street and part of Adams Farm. So apparently it's just that road of individuals who've signed on to this letter who have at least made assertions that they're hearing dogs constantly barking. I also note that Mr. Roy didn't like the fence that was put up and obviously gave you some photographs of it. And I would just say, the Springers, of course, paid a lot of money for that property. They were going to put up a very nice fence. But when this all started to happen in the middle of the winter, they attempted to put up the fence that you see that was there. It's not even put up that well because you can't dig post holes and put that sort of thing in the ground at this particular type of temperature freezing and that sort of thing. Again, I would say to you, and again preliminarily, and you'll hear from a Springer, to, these dogs are just dogs that are, they're herd dog, herd, H-E-R-D, not H-U-R-T. They're herd dogs and they go around a piece of property. As you know, there is an electric fence there, so the dogs cannot get out. In addition, with, with respect to where the Springers previously lived, because I note there was also a complaint in Mr. Roy's letter that they were not licensed. The Springers also have a home and moved from Grafton, where by the way, had anyone checked, there would have been no complaints from the Grafton Animal Control people in all the years they lived there. They, they do have neighbors and they did in Grafton. And I'm, I'm not faulting the owner, of course, she doesn't have to do an investigation multi-townwide. But I would just tell you that there were no complaints of this nature in the town of Grafton. And when they moved here, they still owned their house. And I think you still do own your house, or you sold it.
Sold it last week.
Lucky for you. They were licensed in the town of Grafton. So I note that was another complaint that was in the same letter that Mr. Roy and the neighbors from Hamilton, strike that, Patriot Way had outlined in the original letter. And I know that you do have my client's response to what went on and that sort of thing. And as, again, I said, they moved in, they're in the middle of November. So I, I hope or think that somewhat at least addresses the assertions of what Mr. Roy and his neighbors had to say. Of course, my client is, will say and testify, the dogs don't bark like that. However, if they are taunted and they feel that someone is entering their area, they will bark. And I believe you have been able to get a video that my client took of some individual from, I'd suggest to you, Patriot Way. I, I don't know, did you see those and did the board see those videos? That some individual in the night was walking near a dog and was going down the road and flashing a flashlight to try to prompt her dogs to start barking. So that I, I would just ask you to be mindful of. Because it seems like somebody in, in an effort to perhaps bolster their claim of nuisance barking is now taunting or tormenting the dogs, so they will bark. Again, I had occasion to read Leona's report. You will note that she went there and the dogs weren't barking. And she, on her own volition, purchased a decibel measurer. And basically, I would suggest to you that she does not or did not say that these dogs were nuisance barking and she couldn't get them to bark. And that when she went up to the house, they were not barking incessantly for hours or anything of that nature. So I, again, would just draw your attention to the fact that Mr. Roy and his colleagues who signed on to this were originally complaining about some individual at twenty-five Memorial Drive and not forty-seven. That's in the first line of his letter, if you have occasion to take another look at it. So I don't know their assertions that there's only two dogs of many in the neighborhood that bark and they happen to be hers. I just ask you to consider that that doesn't, that doesn't seem really too reasonable. Moving on from there, I would just have Ms. Springer tell you anything she'd like to say. I, they're good neighbors, they moved in in November. They put up a fence that really was a complete waste of money because a proper fence cannot be put up until the spring. I think they will be putting up a decent fence. This was a stopgap. And nobody, until these complaints started coming in, had, had made any move, as I'm sure Mr. DePaolo brought out on direct testimony, had made any move to attempt to contact or the Springers or do anything by way of seeing if they, there could be a resolution to this. They're good neighbors, they wanna be good neighbors. As I said, they've spent a lot of money on this property. And they look forward to being good citizens, good taxpayers, highly paid taxpayers. And whatever you'd like to say, Ms. Springer.
So we did move in in November and our house has been under construction ever since. It will continue to be under construction for months to come. It was quite an estate when we purchased it. When we found out that the dogs were barking, we've done everything Leona's asked. We've blocked off all the stairs to the barn. We've put them on bark collars against all my moral sense. And anytime she's asked us to put them in, we have. They have access to the barn all day long. We have like a Wi-Fi garage clicker, so we can shut it and open it as they're in and out. But they've never been out overnight, ever, at any property we've ever owned. They come in like at dusk, they'll go out one more time and they come back in. Because otherwise, we'd be finding dead fox and dead everything else overnight. Because if things come in, we have a family of fox right now that we're dealing with. And there's an abandoned trailer that the next-door neighbor has left there that we're hoping to falls over the hill and maybe the fox will go with it. But there is no end of the construction. There's builders building all homes right next to our home next spring. So there's gonna be a lot more homes there. But we do plan on fencing our entire property line.
Questions for members of the board, Selectman Miller?
Hi, thank you. So are the, first question, are the dogs out when, when no one is home?
I'm home all day long.
How many children you have?
We, I have eight children, so I'm literally home all day.
Okay, okay. And when you're not home?
Cleaning all day.
At some point? Yeah, feeding and doing whatever.
Cooking and cleaning.
When you're not home?
If I'm not home, we have, we have a housekeeper and we have a handyman who's on site just about every day.
Okay, okay.
There's nobody, there's never a time where my house has nobody in it.
Okay. So why do you think people, these very nice people from this neighborhood, and you're very nice people, we're all very nice people. Why do you think they've invested this time and energy in complaining and?
Oh, I don't doubt the dogs bark here and there. Today I watched, we have video cameras all on the property. So when you do go to go up my property, there is a warning saying that you're on audio video at all times. So I've been watching it nonstop in the office, keeping it on. So today I knew the dogs had barked from two oh seven to two twenty-five while the UPS was on Patriot Lane. Soon as that stopped, FedEx came to our house, I was like, alright. So they, they do bark when they are stimulated. But it's not, I don't hear it from in my house. And we have terrible windows and terrible drafty doors. But I don't hear, I don't know if it's because I'm up a little bit higher. But no, I've been watching it live lately.
And, and so are you saying it's not a scenario where when you hear them bark, you can react and bring them in or?
I've been yelling through the cameras at them.
Does that yelling help?
Yeah, they stop. Just like the kids.
I used to have a dog yelling wouldn't have helped, but yeah. It, it's not gonna always help work with the kids either, just so you know. But so, you know, I, I'm just, it's just a question to you. Do you, do you recognize that you, recognize, as I've been hearing the testimony, realize that you came from an environment where you lived on a dead-end street? Apparently there weren't any neighbors, these dogs are hurting dogs.
We didn't live on a dead-end street. We actually had just as many neighbors, just not, not like the apartments like that.
They weren't that close proximity, okay. And they're hurting dogs?
We were on a golf course, so it got in one section.
Right, so they're hurting dogs. And you, I assume you have them because you also have farm animals and they serve a purpose. Like, you know, I get all of that. But do you recognize that now you've moved into a property and an environment where you do have a butters very close? And these dogs, because they're doing what comes naturally to them, you know, it, this is what has sort of presented
Right.
a different problem than what you perhaps had in your, in Grafton, is it Grafton?
Hey, Grafton.
With, with that, and?
But I mean, in the spring, our cows are gonna moo, the roosters are gonna crow, the chickens are gonna, like, are we gonna complain about every animal? Because is there a noise ordinance against cows? Like, can I, do I have to zap them too?
You know, these are good questions. Yeah, I, I had the same question when I read. You know, I'm just asking, do you recognize that the dogs, that that's just a different level of, I would say?
They'll be, they'll be kinda busy once the cows come and.
Yeah. And that raises a question, do they bark when they're hurting the animals?
No, they, we had pigs at the last house and they really just kinda played around with them.
Okay, alright. Okay, well, I, that's my major, you can go ahead and I might have more questions.
Selectman DePaolo?
I'm sorry, thank you. So you, you didn't move in until November?
Our, yeah, our house was completely covered in mold, it was uninhabitable.
Okay, but you bought it in September?
Yeah, we closed September twenty-ninth.
Okay. From, were there people working the house from September to November?
Yeah, there's still to this day people in the house.
Okay, are there, were the dogs there during the day? Okay, are there, were the dogs there during the day in September?
They weren't there.
When did the dogs show up on site?
Uh, like November 5th, I think it was, or?
When you moved in?
Yeah. And no, we left them in Grafton a week while we were waiting for all the fencing to be done, the underground fencing.
Okay. Um, they, the underground fencing will hold them back? They, they respect the fence?
Oh, yeah, they don't, it's, it's set to high capacity, they don't cross it, they get beeped and they back off.
Okay. Um, let's go ask you something else, I forgot what it was. Like the, the fence. I lost my train of thought, so I'm gonna wait, I'll come back. It's getting late.
Yeah, yes, it is.
It is.
Anyone else?
I just have a question.
Sure.
As, as the property owner, when you hear that barking, do you find it, or do you think you would find it annoying if you were living on an adjacent piece of property?
Well, see, I don't hear it from in my house, at all. So I don't hear it to the extent that they're saying, it doesn't wake us up or, it doesn't wake him up at all. So I, I don't know how bad it is, like, when I've been watching it on the cameras, it's not like, it's just like 15 minutes and they stop, depending on if it's like a FedEx or something, they're coming in and out.
Okay, so your, your contention is that when they bark, you simply don't hear them if?
Yeah, we pretty much don't hear them.
Okay. Thank you.
No, no, this is now their, their time.
Can I, can I?
This is, Mr. Roy, please. So there's no further questions over the board, Mr. DiPaolo?
So, um, if, if the dogs can go in and out during the day, and, and I believe you when you say you can't hear them, because I can't hear my dog when he starts like barking, I have to really listen for it. How are you gonna know to bring them in if they're barking, if you can't hear them?
Well, the new camera system we have actually sends me a text alert if there's any barking.
Oh, they pick up the noise?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm good for it now, thank you.
Okay, Sleckman, Casablanca.
Hi. What time do, do the dogs go out for the last time at night before they're in the barn for the evening?
They go out from 8:00 AM till 6:00 PM.
And then their last time out is 6 o'clock, and then they sleep all night?
Um, sometimes they'll come back out at 8, but that's it.
And then they're in the barn?
In the barn.
Secured, they can't get out?
No, they're in a stall.
From 8 until 6:00 AM in the morning?
From 6:00 PM till 8:00 AM. Besides, like, they'll go out like once.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to afford you the opportunity, if you have any questions from the, some, any of the previous witnesses.
I, I'm aware of them, I, I just?
Do you have any witnesses that you'd like to call?
No, I, we would have only called Ms. Peasey, and she's already testified.
Mr. Roy, there's a point you wanted to make, I'd ask you to approach the microphone, please.
Shall we go?
No, he'll just, he can, he'll stand right there, because you may need to respond to it.
Yes, I'd, I'd just like to make two points. One is, we said late summer, and this started, the first complaint filed with Leona, which she didn't go back that far, was October. So the dogs are on the property in October barking. Second thing is, I did make a typo on an email that, for the 55, but the letter that I have says 47 or whatever, but, so it, it was late summer, the log that I included was December records, so that, that was a snippet of what we were subjected to in December. It started in October, but that's, that's the only points I wanted to make.
Thank you, Mr. Roy, any response?
Nothing, nothing for that, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Springer.
Okay.
Is the board prepared to, before I ask the board if it wants to close the hearing, because once we close the hearing, we're not, we speak amongst ourselves, so, does anyone have any questions they want to ask, anybody?
Mr. Chairman.
Sleckman, DiPaolo.
Does that mean we can't ask questions of the Animal Control Officer?
Hmm, I believe that we will allow questions of the Animal Control Officer as she represents the town.
Just for clarification, okay, thank you.
Okay, so, since there does not seem to be any more questions to be asked of the complainant, the defendant, the witnesses, I would ask for a motion to close the hearing and to go into a deliberative phase in order to make a finding.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. We are now in a deliberation phase to determine if, what finding the board needs to make. And I remind, the findings are, potential findings, it's either that there is no nuisance or a dangerous situation and the complaint is dismissed, the dogs are deemed to be nuisances, or the dogs are deemed to be dangerous. Thoughts of members of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Sleckman, Kane.
I think we've heard no evidence that the dogs are dangerous, I think we've heard sufficient evidence to find that the dogs are a nuisance.
Any, any comments?
I, I would agree. I, I would say we have a huge divide between what both sides are saying. It's, it's really kind of difficult to understand how that is, but I do think the dog is, the dogs bark. There, there's no question about it, and they probably do it for extended periods of time. It is possible that Ms. Springer can't hear them. I don't think that's a bogus assertion, because when I'm in the front of my house, I can't hear my dog bark in the back when the windows are closed. Especially because I can't hear anything. But, so, I, I believe that's possible. I have a little problem with the start, um, of, of when this started happening, because somebody can't be right. But I do think that it went on through the winter. I think Animal Control Officer has been able to document that it happened through the winter, so I don't question that. I'm not, I, I will say, I, I'm not sure what we're gonna be able to do to really satisfy or rectify the situation. It's not a vicious dog, so there's limits, I mean, well, we have discretion, but I mean reality, there's limits on what we can do, so.
Okay.
You can go first.
This is, this is a tough one. I mean, they're such nice people, and everyone has their own perspective, and I'm, I can completely see, no one wants to keep a dog barking log like this. You don't just do this because you're lacking for something else to do in your day. I mean, it's clearly gotten to the point where you feel like you need to keep track of it because it's just disrupting your day-to-day existence. And at the same time, when I listen to Mrs. Springer, I can tell that she's trying to make some efforts with the, the cameras and the text to her phone when the dog barks. I mean, my phone would be blowing up at home because my dog's always barking, so I, I can see her trying to make some adjustments in her daily routine. I can understand how she doesn't hear them, but I also think that we are so limited by what the law says for what we can do for a nuisance dog, it's subjective in some regard, but that I think if we are able to do anything, I would really like to see that nighttime period preserved so that the, the residents of the Patriot Lane neighborhood are able to get a good night's sleep and not have the dog interrupting that. So that's something that I, if we can do something like that, I would like to do. So those are just my thoughts on that.
So if I can suggest, let's move in a deliberative fashion, I think we may be prepared to, to vote on a motion as to whether or not the dogs are nuisances or not. So I would suggest we consider doing that, and if we find the dogs to be nuisances, then we move on to potential remedies.
Mr. Chairman?
So you're saying you don't have any more comments? Okay.
Well, no, I think the comments will just, I, I, I mean, I think we've, I got a strong sense of what the board thinks about whether or not the dogs are nuisances. I mean, I, I think, unless I'm, I'm totally misreading the board, I think some of these comments can be continued in the discussion of what, what remedies we're gonna need to employ. I, I mean, I, if I'm, if I'm off track here, we can just stop right here and continue. I mean, I guess just a question of, if we say they're a nuisance, then we can talk about remedies. If we were to say they aren't nuisances, then we don't need to talk about remedies because?
Right.
There's no nuisance. So let's establish whether or not that we believe there's a nuisance.
Motion that the dogs are a nuisance.
Um, I, let me see, I think we need a better, we think we need a slightly better motion than that. Let me go to my cheat sheets here, Mr. Kane, we haven't done one of these in a while.
Do you want, I've got it up here, do you want me to make the motion?
Sure, you, you don't mind.
I withdraw my mumbling.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to move based on the, on the, let me see, give me one second here. Well, I, I'd like to, I'd like to move based on the testimony heard today, and, and the general law description of a nuisance dog as one that by excessive barking causing damage or other interference, a reasonable person would find such behavior disruptive to one's quiet and peaceful enjoyment, that the Board of Selectmen find the dog complained, the dogs complained of as nuisance by reasons, as I just stated.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion to that? No, I think that's, that's in good order. Any, no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted, okay. Now let's talk about what we're going to do about this, what actions we choose to take. We do have as part of the Animal Control Officer's report on the back page, a series of recommendations. Does the board wish to speak with the Animal Control Officer in greater detail?
Mr. Chairman?
Sleckman, Kane.
In order to get the conversation going, I would move that we adopt the recommendations contained within the Animal Control Officer's report, item one through five, and that we add the dusk to dawn curfew, if you will, to be in the barn.
Okay, I, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I do think we need to put some dates by which some of these things need to be accomplished. I don't think we can just keep them open, so I think we're gonna need to amend the motion in some degree to address that, but Mr. DiPaolo, your thoughts?
I'm, I'm not sure that, um, some of these are, are practical, if these, if these dogs are gonna be out, unless there's gonna be a solid fence that you can't see through all the way around the property when the other animals come in, I, I don't, I don't think these are necess, some of these are, I, I don't think the privacy fence makes sense unless they're confined to a certain area.
Okay, let's run through them.
Well, can I just?
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I seriously doubt at this stage of the game that putting the dogs in obedience classes is gonna work if the bark collars aren't stopping them. I, I could be wrong, Ms. Pease, is really, if the dog, if the, if the bark collars, which personally I don't like either, aren't doing the job, is a trainer gonna be able to do the job? I mean, are we just trying to, you know, just come up with some kind of a solution? One, is one work better than the other?
I think that bark collars have been proven to be partially helping, because I'm hearing that there is less, over the last few weeks, there has been less barking. I always put training in, I will not be at all, I'll always do the training, I'm coming out, because I always put training in, training never hurts anymore.
Is it, are there people around here who could do that kind of training?
Mm-hmm.
In the immediate, relative immediate area?
Yes.
I, I did give a list of trainers that I have suggested in the past, some of them will come to the house and try and help mitigate the problem.
So they're available?
Yes, they are available.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Sleckman, Casablanca.
Sleckman, DiPaolo. There are trainers available that will come to your house, because I had to have one come to my house for my dog.
For barking?
And they work with you on whatever your issue is, and they will come right out to your house and take care of it with you and your dog.
If we have any other questions for Animal Control Officer Pease, I'd like you to come up to the table for the microphone. Let's, let's, Mr. DiPaolo, you're suggesting that some of these may not be applicable, I've suggested that some of these may need dates, that something has to be accomplished by, so I, I would think, let's, let's go through them and?
Okay.
See what we think. So item one, that the Springers will have bark collars on their two dogs at all times, and that the Springers will check the batteries in the collar on a regular basis to ensure that the collars are working properly. I think I'd like it to be that the bark collars, and it sounds like they already are, but that the collars being employed are approved by the Animal Control Officer as?
Sure.
Appropriate. Anyone else have any other thoughts about item one?
I have a question on this. So, you know, I think there's a general consensus that most, most of us would prefer not to do the bark collar, oh, there you are, you moved. So may I ask Mrs. Pease a question?
Absolutely.
And, and it goes to how we word this, so if, if, if the dogs are in, get trained with obedience training, and they are able to resolve the barking issues, and there's no, no longer a need for the bark collar, I mean, you know, the, do they both have to go together? I mean, could we put some caveat in here that if the, there's some remedy over a period of time, then bark collars aren't?
Probation.
Hmm?
Probation.
Probation, yeah, for, yeah, probation. I don't know, something like that, because I hate to put something here that, that's, you know, solid in writing and put dogs into, through something they don't need to be?
The way the bark collar works is that when the dog barks?
Yeah.
It, it hits them?
Yeah.
And then they stop barking. So if the situation is in hand, the collars will not be zapping the dogs.
Oh, okay, that's a good, that's a very good point.
And if they open their mouth and they start barking, they are allowed like one or two free barks.
Yeah.
And then they will get zapped.
They'll get out of bark, get bark free. Get out of jail free. Okay, thank you, that makes perfect sense, I should have thought of that right, not barking, not barking.
Can I ask, I was wondering about the bark, the bark collar, is it the same kind of zap that they'd get from like the electric fence?
It would be similar, I have never been hit with a bark collar, I have been, no, I, I was hit with a electric fence collar. I do not know exactly what the stimulation is.
I mean, I agree with what you're saying, I just, to me too, like, I'm uneasy with the whole overzapping of the collars.
The electric fence collar gives a beep first, and the dogs learn to pay attention to the beep before they get hit by the collar. So the bark collar, as I understand, I mean, I use them on one of my own dogs too, is they, they will bark once and not get hit. When they get up to two or three times, they will get hit by it. So the dogs learn pretty much not to bark.
Okay, thank you.
Where were you on the amendment, Mr. Chairman?
I'm, I'm okay with item one, ready to move on to item two.
I thought you would offer to further amendment.
No, me? No, I, no, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. Item two, Mr. DiPaolo thinks that the privacy fence at the top of the hill between the property and the Patriot, and Patriot Lane is?
Well, I was thinking of something else, I actually read that one.
So?
That's fine. If it's gonna be along the property line, that's what we're talking about?
The fence at the top of the hill between the property and Patriot Lane?
That's the property line.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't know, a, a, all I'm seeing is what I'm reading here, at the top of the hill.
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
If one and three are successful, then two might not be needed. I'm just wondering if we don't hold that in abeyance. It's a considerable cost, they're already undertaking a renovation, I think our point is control the barking of the animals.
Oh, I did think we heard, and from the, the- Oh, I did think we heard, and from the defendant, that they intend to put a fence in the property. Just, am I correct? You can nod your head.
I know, but now you've got the additional costs of the other things you want.
Yeah, all right.
Training and collars and electric.
Mm-hmm, understood. First of all, I don't think we could reasonably expect a fence to be erected until the end of May.
Probably, my experience is, these guys are already booked up.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say.
It's going to, it could be months.
I think we need to focus on the barking.
Okay.
No one has said there's debris or anything.
So it sounds like there may be the collective desire of the Board, when we, I think we should go back and maybe do one amendment if we can. We might want to delete item two, I'm getting a sense of that.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Item three, enroll the dog in obedience classes with a trainer that specializes in dogs with barking issues. We do have a document, Trainers and Resources for Potentially Problem Dogs, that lists six well-known establishments that do this kind of work, that we can provide to the defendant. How's everybody feel about that?
Absolutely.
Sure.
And it should be enroll and complete? Enroll the dog and complete obedience classes? Enroll the dog in and complete obedience classes with a trainer that specializes in dogs with barking issues. Item four, place the dogs inside the barn, whether our workers on the property doing renovations or repairs to the property. I got a sense that that could be a little problematic if there's going to be workers there virtually all the time, but I don't know what the Board thinks.
What's the other option?
Well, yeah, I would say, again, if the other things work, then that's not a problem, but to me, this is just, again, common sense. A lot of these should be common sense, basically, but, but since we have to go to this point of making it a, putting it in writing, I would just leave, I would leave it there to make the point.
Okay, everyone seems fine with that. And item five, primarily keep the dogs on the left side of the barn, so there is an additional barrier between the dogs and Patriot Lane. You're talking about inside the barn?
The barn is here, the dogs I have been seeing here. Patriot Lane is over here on this side. There is a, like a paddock area over here. I do not know if it's in the electric fence area. That would put an additional barrier. I don't know if it will make that big a difference, but I figured that any barrier between the dogs barking and the people might be a plus.
Well, we have to understand what it means if we put it in the order.
It might be something you want to drop out.
No, I'm not saying you shouldn't do it, I mean, I just think we should describe it right, so they know what they're being told to do.
Well, primarily is a very problematic word.
I think we should keep the focus on controlling the barking. Because if the dogs have controlled barking, they can be looking at Patriot Lane all day long, and nobody will mind.
So, Mr. Kane, you're suggesting that item five be removed?
I think two and five can be held in abeyance. Hopefully, this is the last time everybody goes on, has a great summer.
And?
The dogs live half-deadly around.
Mr. Kane, you proposed a, an addition.
Six, yeah, item six at the time, which was just the point, I think, raised by my colleague Beth, of a dusk-to-dawn, put them in the barn until we know this thing is, until this is licked.
Dogs to be confined to barn or house.
Right.
From dawn, from dusk to dawn?
I think that gets the point of people likely getting a decent night's sleep.
I like eight AM, dawn.
Dawn could be five.
Could be five o'clock in the morning.
Okay, I'm up at dawn, you're right, that's fine, whenever you want, yeah, I understand.
Well, seven, I meant seven.
Sometimes I get up that early, believe it or not. I think it should be eight o'clock.
Eight fifteen.
Eight to dusk.
Greenwich Mean Time.
Eight to dusk.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, what's the town noise ordinance, is it seven AM?
Yes.
Seven P.
I mean, when you've got eight, she's, there's eight kids in the house, eight AM is like lunchtime.
All right, seven.
Seven to seven.
I think seven.
Dogs to be confined to barn or house from seven PM to seven AM.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I, I don't know if eight o'clock or nine o'clock might be more reasonable, I know our quiet time.
In the evening, you mean?
Yes, just so that the dogs have a little more time to take care of their business. I know our quiet time.
Certainly the dog, I mean, it's, I don't want anyone to, the dogs need to go outside, they get to go outside, I mean, it's not that they're going to be allowed to be out for an extended period of time during the.
From ten PM, the noise ordinance hours, whatever that is, seven AM to ten PM, whatever.
I think quiet time, as I had understood, was nine PM until seven AM.
There, whatever that is.
Yes.
In accordance with the town's by ordinance for noise, whatever that is.
Well, there isn't one.
We're hearing different things.
I know, but can't we just use that language?
Well, but that's seven to seven?
Yeah, there's seven to seven for construction work and for industrial zoning districts and whatnot. So I'd prefer to go with a time that the Animal Control Officer is comfortable with.
So, your suggestion is?
Eight or nine at night.
To, to seven AM.
To seven AM.
What's the pleasure of the Board?
Nine.
Nine.
If you have a dog, you know.
Dogs to be confined to barn or house from nine PM to seven AM, that's ten hours.
As you said, Mr. Chairman, if under control, they go out for a walk, that's one thing.
Right, so. Okay, so what we're, I believe we would like a a new motion that the Board adopt as orders. Items one, three, just changing the language, that enroll the dogs in and complete obedience classes with a trainer that specializes in dogs with barking issues. Maintain item four, remove item five, and keep item six, so there will be four, four specific orders, or actions that need to be taken within the order.
Is the training within a time zone?
Oh, okay, thank you. That the, that the training should commence by today, is March 12th, by April 15th, by April 1st? I mean, I have no idea what availability is.
I think April 15th is reasonable, if they cannot find anybody, they report to the ACO. I tried this a while ago on something unrelated, and it was a while to get the person you wanted.
Okay, enroll the, the dogs in and complete obedience classes by, no, not complete, excuse me, enroll, enroll the dogs in obedience classes by April 15th, and complete them with a trainer. Should, should no trainer be available by April 15th, that will need to be reported to and approved by the Animal Control Officer.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, you got that? Okay. So, okay, we have, thank you, Mr. Mr. Guy, so we have four items. Anybody think of anything else? Someone care to make a motion to that effect?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, could I just, a comment that I didn't make earlier, but, but I would, I would hope on both sides here now that there's an opportunity for some consideration and understanding of what each side is going to, that they're not trying to harass, and you've got some new neighbors who have a situation here, new to Shrewsbury, and, you know, if there's an opportunity, you know, let's just try to get together and, you know, kind of understand what each other is doing here. And hopefully, we're not back here in a few months with more, more dog issues to deal with.
Thank you very much for your participation. Board members, considering the time of the evening, we're going to truncate this agenda, we're going to hit some items that we must do, and we're going to, forgive me in advance if our next meeting turns into a long one as well, because we're going to push some stuff, but it's getting late. So, next item. Excuse me? Oh, okay. Ladies and gentlemen, can we ask you, the building will still be open, could we ask you to leave the room, though, and work your way down the hall? Okay, let's move on to item seven.
Nice job, John.
A joint meeting with the Beal Reuse Committee, where have they got? Presentation by Kristen Lass, Assistant Town Manager, regarding the Mass Development Real Estate Technical Assistance Services Grant. And the action would be to review and then vote to authorize the Chair to endorse a letter of municipal support. Ms. Lass?
Thank you, I note that Mr. DiPaolo is the chairperson of the Beal Reuse Committee, and Mr. Baldinger was in the audience, but I'm sure had to leave for other purposes. Thank you for hearing me this evening, I'll be as brief as possible.
Do whatever's take, I mean, do it right.
So before you, in your Google Drive, you have a draft application for Real Estate Services Technical Assistance, call for proposals fiscal year 2022 Mass Development. You may recall that I was before your board last year to request a signature on a grant that we submitted to Mass Development of similarity, that we were successful in receiving fifty thousand dollars to prepare a visioning study for the town center and for the Beal School. And that process is wrapping up now, I actually received a draft report from the consultants this afternoon, but have not been able to review that or distribute it to the Beal Reuse Committee. We feel that we're in the next stage of the process where we'd like to apply, and I've discussed this with the Chair of the Beal Reuse Committee, for a request for proposal to be prepared through a consultant for the disposition of the Beal School, incorporating the results that we've heard from the visioning session, the conversations we've had with the Beal Reuse Committee and with professional staff of the town of Shrewsbury. So you have before you a draft application. There are some comments that I still need to fill in. This grant is due on Friday, and would like your support and endorsement to submit that, and hopefully we'll be successful in receiving that. I'm still working out the technicalities of how much we'd be asking for, but I do believe it's probably in the ten to twenty thousand dollar range. But we'd be asking Mass Development for some consideration on other projects we've seen of this magnitude.
Questions or comments from members of the Board?
It's a good idea.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve and authorize the Chairman to sign all necessary documents related to this.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted, thank you very much.
Thank you, I believe Valerie has a letter.
Sign this evening, yep, okay. Next item that we will attend to is item eight. Presentation by Assistant Town Manager Lass regarding Housing Choice Community Designation and the action of either review and then act to sign the application.
Thank you, so the Commonwealth of Massachusetts came out with what's called the Housing Choice Initiative and Housing Choice Designation last year. And what this is, is a designation which is granted to certain communities who produce a certain number of housing units in a period of five years. And with that designation, the community is afforded the opportunity to apply for certain grants that will help with housing production, affordability, and other magnitudes. We were alerted by the Office for Housing Choice Initiative that we appear to be within the threshold to apply for this year's services. We are verifying that we have produced five hundred housing units in the past five years. So, again, we discussed a lot at your last meeting about the Housing Production Plan and submitting that, and how we'd like to create additional housing stock in the town of Shrewsbury, not just for affordability, but for certain cohorts of the community to be able to come and move back, or move here for the first time, or continue to live in the community. So we feel that it's in the best interest of the town to apply for the Housing Choice Designation, we don't see any downfall in that. I can tell you that we are still in the process of verifying that we've created that five hundred units in the past five years. If we do not meet that threshold, there's also a threshold that you've created three percent or three hundred units in the past five years, but you'd have to meet five of eleven best practices. We are not confident at this time that we've met those five practices. We believe that we've hit three, and we're on our way to hit five, based upon submitting the Housing Production Plan and getting that certified, and some other rezoning that we're working on. So, I apologize that we're not better prepared for more information this evening. However, the grant is due on Thursday, and we don't feel that there's any downside to applying and trying to get the designation.
Questions from members of the Board?
Can I just, one question? It doesn't make any difference what the pricing of the housing is, as long as it was created?
That is correct, so the goal of the Commonwealth is to create a certain number of units. And if we're helping the Commonwealth achieve that goal, no matter if it's market rate or affordable, we would be granted that designation.
It's a good idea, second.
Your motion, we have a second, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. This was my review of the annual town meeting warrant. It's still in development form or draft form. So the next meeting, we're actually going to be voting on it, so I really think we need to at least, not at least, I think we need to run through the articles just to make sure that there are no issues that any members of the Board have. Mr. Mr. Guy?
Could I just ask a question at the outset, Mr. Chairman? I see a letter requesting a certain zoning change from a local attorney. Is, is the plug in here in case people move forward? Okay, thank you, I just wanted to understand that at the beginning.
Mr. Chairman, we have thirty articles drafted for your consideration. We have three placeholders for citizens' petition, as we always do at this point in time. We've received one signed citizens' petition to this date, or to date. The deadline is March nineteenth. We have three other placeholders for articles that we've utilized extensively in the past, but have not had the opportunity to fully vet out to determine if, or if we do not meet, need them. And I will go thoroughly but swiftly through the warrant. Article one is a report of town officers and committees after they're on, we do anticipate at least two reports to be made at the meeting. Article two is the Wright and Harlow Charitable Trust Choosing Trustees, which is standing article. Article three and article four are out of traditional order. Since the changes that we are proposing for article three seeks to shift authorities that lie with town meeting to the Personnel Board as it relates to the classification and compensation of employees, with the underlying purpose of this being business-oriented nature, to improve our ability to recruit and retain employees, and move basically from a highly regimented civil service-type step and grade system into a more performance-based system in the future that would be consistent with the management approach of setting goals and tracking performance across all departments. Article four is an article that would amend the classification and compensation plan, and I would suggest that the Personnel Board who sponsor article three and four would look to have article four defeated if article three were to pass. If not, the primary goal of article four would be to at least make a cost of living adjustment to the wage scale upon the recommendation of the Personnel Board after they've done their analysis this spring.
So, excuse me, if three pass, I mean, yeah, if three passes, the Personnel Board will request defeat of four?
That's correct.
Okay.
Since they would essentially then have the authority to make the cost of living adjustment outside of town meeting. I will note that in article three, there is a requirement that the Personnel Board will report will report annually to town meeting through the annual town report on any actions that they've taken related to the classification and compensation plan to make sure the town meeting remains informed of trends in those areas of town operations. Article five is the appropriation of funds to pay the medical expenses of retired disabled police officers and firefighters, standing article where we reimburse certain medical costs for individuals throughout the course of the year. Last year, we appropriated $4,200 on this item. And we'll develop the estimate that we need for this spring and the coming weeks. Article six is the acceptance of Chapter 90 funds with the anticipation of $989,833. Article seven is essentially a placeholder that will remain on the article, which would be to transfer a sum of money between departments should there... should any need arise between the signing of the warrant and town meeting, but I have no need at this time. Article eight is the establishment of an enterprise fund to manage the business operations and financials of the water department, much like the solid waste is currently managed. Article nine is the establishment of an enterprise fund for stormwater... for stormwater utility. Again, much like our current solid waste. Article 10 is the establishment of the operating budget for fiscal year 2020. And as is being presented at the budget hearings, this article would seek to appropriate at least at this point $119,86,489 for the operation of town departments. Article 11 is a... is a article to raise and appropriate funds within the solid waste enterprise or for the solid waste enterprise fund for the fiscal year 2020. This is an article that we've used in the past in our standing town meeting. And like that article, articles 12 and 13... Excuse me, I'm getting ahead of myself. Article 12 is a new article that would raise and appropriate funds, make them available for the operation of the sewer department. This is a new article this year. This number used to be contained within the operating budget in previous years where we'd raise funds sufficient alongside of the other forms of appropriation from the sewer fund in order to pay for those services. So, we're holding this as a standing article. This would include all direct expenses of the sewer department with the exception of capital items, which are in a subsequent article, which is article 13. So, this is the capital article for all capital improvements as it relates to the operation of the sewer system. It would be used and spent on purposes like testing, permitting, construction, reconstruction, and replacement and other improvements of the sewer system. As we have committed to, these particular projects that we anticipate for the upcoming year will be detailed out as they have in the past, but would be considered under a single motion with the ability to answer questions on individual items or remove individual items after the request and discretion of town meeting in accordance with those procedures. But it is not a separate article for, as we've done in the past, for pump station improvements and then telemetry systems related to pump stations, et cetera. This would include all those matters in one item that are included on the balance sheet. Article 14 is the funding of the Water Services Enterprise, if established earlier at the meeting. This is for the direct operating expenditures of the water system. Article 15 is a capital budget totaling $2,543,000... $2,543,000 for capital improvements relating to the water system, which would include mains and equipment for the coming year. Article 16 is to transfer funds for... Raise and appropriate or transfer $1,205,078 for Stormwater Enterprise Fund, which would be established earlier. This is the first year of having the full stormwater utility for FY '20. So, this is for the direct expenditures and operations of that utility. Article 17 is the capital budget for the stormwater utility, which totals $250,000 for storm drain improvements. Article 18 is the general capital budget, which would include all departments' requests that are being proposed for funding for fiscal year 2020 outside of the utilities. Article 18 is a standing article that we have historically funded, $18,000 for the sale of cemetery lots and improvement thereof. Article 20 is a prior year bill article, which we do not have any at this time, but this item would remain in case anything comes up. Articles 21, 22, and 23 are held for citizens' petition at this time. Article 21 is a placeholder that we've utilized in previous years for the acceptance of streets and/or subdivisions within the... or streets within subdivisions or other streets within the community. And then, article 24 is the establishment or amendment of the general bylaws to establish affordable housing trust, as was presented in a memo from Mr. Cahill a few weeks ago. Article 25 is a zoning bylaw requested through the planning board and authorized by the board to amend certain area frontages, yard, and lot coverage requirements. The floor area ratio? Article 26 is amending section seven of the zoning bylaws, the lot shape factor, to eliminate certain creative creations of lots within the community that we have seen. Article 28 is a placeholder for the potential modification of the Route 20 overlay zoning district. Article 29 is a placeholder regarding Mr. Kane's earlier question about a request from a development and an attorney within town for consideration for a change in the zoning bylaw. Article 30 is a placeholder that we've utilized to take care of utility easements in the past. Article 31 is an act relative to affordable housing within the town of Shrewsbury. And this is our special legislation that gets reauthorized from time to time for special legislation. Article 32 would seek to transfer a sum of money. Last year, it was $100,000 to transfer to Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services for their use for counseling and education to families within the community. Article 33 is the article that we transferred $20,000 in free cash from in the previous year to the Lake Quinsigamun Commission for the management of the lake. Article 34 is the request to transfer funds to the general stabilization account from free cash in the most proposed amount of $750,000. Articles 35... Article 35 is set the annual spending limits for certain revolving accounts under article 22 of the general bylaws. Article 33 is the acceptance of funds from the municipal light department cable TV division to lower the levy. Article 37 is municipal light funds for the same purpose. Article 38 is the use of free cash to lower the tax levy as well. Offset the tax levy. Those are 38 articles that we have in preparation for. Again, six of them are placeholders, three being of citizen... for citizens' petition, which we currently have one that has been certified by the town clerk.
Thank you. Any questions from members of the board? Okay, and we'll have this in ready-to-sign form at our next meeting. Terrific. Okay, next item we need to address. We're going to need to address item 13, but we're going to put that off to the side for a minute, too. And now, we are going to move to item 15. Review and act to sign the revised deeds with the Glavine property at 214 Lake Street and authorize the town manager to take any further action necessary. So, this goes back to comments Mr. Kane made earlier that D.C.A.M. requested some minimal changes.
Was additional tweaking of a couple of access points to the cemetery on the west side of Lake Street. And just to make sure everything is good and square, we would ask that the board re-sign the sheet.
Okay, does the board have the draft motion?
Yes.
In your folders?
Oh, yeah, here it is. Up on the top.
So, could someone make the motion?
Loading. Load, I think. We've been shut off.
Not loading, yeah.
Yeah, it's not loading.
I can't get anything.
Could someone over there?
Has a motion.
I move, Mr. Chairman, I move that the board vote to authorize the town manager to sign the deeds is accepted if necessary and to sign any other documents required to complete the conveyances to the town as authorized by vote of a special town meeting on January 17, 2018 and by chapter 173 of the Acts of 2015.
Can I just ask a technical question? I move that the board vote to vote to authorize the town manager to sign the deeds?
If necessary.
If necessary. So, in the event something goes sideways, elses suspenders. Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Sorry.
Second.
The board is also voting to sign the deeds as presented this evening.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Okay, we next need to address item 17. Review and act on the application for the staffing for adequate fire and emergency response, otherwise known as SAFER grant program as prepared and applied for by the Shrewsbury Fire Department. Any... Anything we need to talk about?
Mr. Chairman, this is, as you have approved in previous years, the support of grant application and adhere to the town's matching portion for four additional firefighters. Now, this is a declining matching program where the grant funds would cover a portion of those costs in a declining fashion over a three-year period.
Questions or comments from members of the board?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. We're going to jump down to item 20. Ms. Lass, I think.
Sure. So, the Council on Aging, Shrewsbury Senior Center has been working with the residents at Orchard Grove on becoming more dementia-friendly in the town of Shrewsbury. And I believe that the senior center director, Sharon Yeager, discussed this further at the Finance Committee public hearing last week. So, the residents at Orchard Grove have prepared a mailer that's on your drive requesting that they use the town of Shrewsbury seal when helping to train others on becoming dementia-friendly in the town of Shrewsbury as this is a partnership between their organization and the town of Shrewsbury.
I move we approve.
Yeah, motion.
It's good.
Yeah, great idea.
For a good cause.
I just thought that we had certain rules around how the seal was used, but...
But they're doing it with the Council on Aging.
No, I understand that, but it's still the town seal. Something else could represent the town of Shrewsbury without being the seal. But perhaps I'm channeling a past...
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion?
I just... one comment, maybe more than one. I just think that this is a really important initiative and I definitely support any work that can be done around dementia and Alzheimer's because I really do think that it's becoming more and more prevalent in the community and it is difficult to try to deal with people and understand where they're coming from when you're not, you know, really trained in that. My other question, I guess I have, is they just want the seal? There's no contribution that we're making to this financially? This is all just being done sort of on behalf of the town, but...
In concert. So, the town is working towards becoming dementia-friendly and the residents at Orchard Grove are supplying the resources to help with the training. They're not asking for any financial contribution.
And who will be trained? Is it like responders?
They've already trained a number of police officers. They'll be training business owners, restaurants, teachers, others. I think it's great. Thank you.
Did we vote this?
No.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Mr. DiPaolo, we're going to go back to item 13 now. Do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Could we... it'll take 30 seconds to do number 12. Been waiting for it for about three or four months. Is it possible to do that one?
Of course, Mr. DiPaolo. Item 12, review and act on the request from Meg Hockdip Sarapali, field engineer Selco, to install three streetlights on 114 Memorial Drive, 118 Memorial Drive, and 145 Memorial Drive. As you can see from the documents we received from Selco, they are recommending this installation... these installations. Annual cost per light will be $43.90 for a total of $131.70.
Move we approve.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Mr. DiPaolo, we are now going to take up item 13. Do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I'd like to recuse myself from this discussion.
Okay.
So, I will step outside for a moment.
Okay. Mr. Mizaghar, let's talk about item 13, which is review and vote to set health insurance rates for fiscal '20.
So, at the March 5 meeting of the Shrewsbury Insurance Advisory Committee, I presented active and non-Medicare-eligible health... retiree health insurance rates to them based upon the rates that were established through the West Suburban Health Group. These rates range from an increase of 9.5% year-over-year down to a low of 5%, depending on the plan and the plan design that any individual may take. We will note that the financial situation with the West Suburban Health Group has vastly improved over several years... over the past several years. We enjoy the benefit of that joint purchasing arrangement. I want to ask the board to authorize and set these rates as included in your packet for the upcoming fiscal and benefit year.
Questions or comments from members of the board?
I have one. Last year was the first year that we offered the HSA plan and I was just wondering if you're seeing more people kind of jumping over to that plan now? People are feeling more comfortable with it?
So, I guess... so, we had 79 originally jump on board, which is about 6% of our health insurance population. And this coming spring is really the next time that we'd have the opportunity to see more migration to that. So, we're going to do some outreach and continue to encourage employees to go there. You'll also note that there's a rate spread in any given plan where the health... the HSA plans are going up 2% less than the benchmark plans. That's not only to continue to encourage enrollment, but because those plans are performing much better than the conventional benchmark plans.
Thank you.
Motion to adopt as in our package this evening.
Second.
Your motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Slockman, Miller, could you gather? Slockman, DiPaolo?
It's my pleasure to gather, Slockman.
Consulting with another board. Two-timing us.
So, what's up next, Mr. Chairman?
Can we just move on?
We have some executive session that we're going to have to hit.
How about if we do number 12 in order to take care of another item? We're sitting here waiting for his move.
We did 12.
We did 12.
All right, then.
How about 11?
Maybe I should pay attention.
All right, let's... well, fine. We're just going to do this. So, okay, we have three items under executive session. We may only need to talk about two of them, but I suggest we vote to convene into executive session for all three and then we decide which of those we want to take and the minutes would simply reflect what we discussed and what we didn't discuss. So, I believe there's a motion in the... in the drive. Does somebody have that? Could someone make it?
Or is it 21?
21, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board vote to go into executive session pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 30A, for the purposes of discussing contract negotiations with non-
Chapter 30A, for the purposes of discussing contract negotiations with non-union personnel for the town manager to consider the purchase, exchange, or lease of value of real property and for the purposes of discussing strategy with respect to litigation.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second.
And not to open into, not to go back into open session.
Yeah, no, I will be doing that. But thank you, it's late. We need all the help we can get. Roll call vote. Selectman Casavan?
Aye.
Selectman Kane?
Aye.
Selectman LeBeau, aye. Selectman DiPaolo?
Aye.
Selectman Miller?
Aye.
Okay, I will now advise that the board is going to enter into executive session for the purposes of discussing contract negotiations with non-union personnel, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, the town manager to consider the purchase, exchange, or lease of value of real property because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, 653 Main Street, and for the purposes of discussing strategy with respect to litigation because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the board, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, the Route 20 Overlay District Zoning Bylaw. Further, the board will not reconvene back into open session. We've moved, we've seconded, we've voted. We are now going to convene into executive session, not to reconvene back into open session. Thank you for your attention.